Call to order at 5:57 PM Tuesday, November 27th, 2018 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the Board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schlusner.
Here.
Ms. Seelinger.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 3.01, recognitions. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we had three of our athletic teams compete at the state competition, so we'd like to recognize them tonight. First, I'm going to call Jeff Whitney, Activities Director at Mayo High School.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz, School Board, for having us down. It's been a quick fall season and already feels like winter, obviously, out there. We had a great fall season at Mayo High with approximately 600 athletes participating all fall long and had a couple of Big Nine Championships. But our one team that went to the state tournament was our girls' tennis team. And with us tonight is Dave Edwards, our girls' tennis coach, and I think he brought along at least one of the captains to come up with him as well.
Good evening. Thanks for recognizing us. Another great year for the Mayo Spartans. One of the players showed up. The rest are on the tennis court or studying. I think we had four seniors this year. Every one of them's a 4.0. So that's the type of kids that play for Mayo Tennis, the type of kids that I get to work with every day, and I really appreciate that. We went to state tournament this year. I think this was like 22 out of 23 years we've made it. And we had a great experience. We played in some incredible matches. One, we ended up losing. One, we ended up winning. But the experiences that these girls got from this tournament is something they'll never forget, and it's something I'll never forget. So again, thank you. And I brought Emily Norman, a senior captain, along with me tonight. Thank you.
I don't know, did Dave tell you they got third place when they were up there? So I don't know if he said that. But very competitive edina team that wins it the same 23 years that we've been up there, so.
Thank you very much.
This time I'm going to call Mark Queasly, Activities Director of Century High School.
Madam Chair, Mr. Munoz, members of the Board, Ms. Edgar, I have with us this evening Josh Hayden, our girls' tennis coach at Century High School. So if Josh would please come forward with our two students.
Again, thanks for having us. And it's been a great season for these two. Julia Baber, ninth grader, Paige Sargent, eighth grade. They had a great season and won the Section 1AA doubles individual tournament. And also had a great time at the state tournament with these two. They placed fourth overall and were the youngest team combined at the state tournament, so.
I know we have some tennis parents out there tonight, so if you would please stand and be recognized for all your support to our program. Next up is our very, very busy adapted athletics program. And our team could not be here this evening because they were participating in their year-end banquet, and then also they have already started adapted soccer, adapted hockey. And as the Board knows, we now have three adapted programs. The soccer program in its second year, our hockey program in the winter, and then our softball program in the spring. So it's a great opportunity for us to recognize these multi-sport student athletes for us in the Rochester Public School system. This adapted floor hockey team took fourth place at the state tournament, had a great regular season, lost in the semifinals, and actually lost to the state champions. So if I could have the monitor flipped, I have a picture of this wonderful group. There we go. There we go. The group is coming up. And I would like to take an opportunity to recognize the group. And I realize the picture is not that big, but it's great that I have everyone listed. First of all, in the front row, on the left-hand side, going left to right, is Coach Maddie Hardiky, and then Kirk Peterson, Ali Yasser, Noah Johnson, Eric Schaller, William Adamson, Sam Dunn, and then Coach Tori Hardiky. Yes, they are sisters. And then in the back row, Garrison Israelson, Kari Mohammed, Nick Gebing, and Nick is actually a Byron student for us, Max Boyham, Jacob Elg... Elgabbi, that one's a mouthful, Matt Horseman, and then Dane Bailey. So again, they want to thank the Board for the opportunity to participate as adapted students, and then also the lifelong experience that Jeff talked about in going to these state tournaments and participating in these programs is a great asset for Rochester Public Schools. So thank you for that.
3.02, Minnesota Energy Resources rebate.
Yes, at this time I'm going to have John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, introduce our guest.
All right. Joining me here is Paulo Sullivan from Minnesota Energy. And he called me a few weeks back and said he wanted to bring money and present to you. So I said, you get to be right at the top of the agenda. So you're up. Say a few words.
Thank you very much. My name's Paulo Sullivan. I'm the Public Relations Representative for Minnesota Energy Resources, a natural gas company. And this is my colleague here, Darrell Leonard. He's the Area Operations Supervisor. And we would like to congratulate and thank the school district for their attention to energy efficiency and fiscal responsibility. This past summer, well, they're constantly doing projects, which we appreciate. And this past summer, they installed three new high-efficiency boilers at the Herbert Hoover School. And for those efforts, we would like to award them with this $29,000, $29,250 check. So, and just to let you know, again, thank you and the school district for their attention to fiscal responsibility and to let you know that they are doing their best to put the money where it belongs in educating the children and not going up a boiler stack. So thank you very much.
3.03, School Board Committee Assignments Update. Do any Board members have committee assignments that they would like to share? Ms. Seelinger.
I was privileged to attend a lunch today for Heart of the Dance program. We've heard about this a little bit, I think, at the board table. And it was great to see some of our Gage and Riverside students not only speak but dance. We're hoping, I believe the organization is hoping to spread this further across the district, and got a lovely donation from the Rochester Area Foundation to do that. I have told Mr. Munoz about the program and the video and made a suggestion that perhaps the students could come and dance for us here because it would be great to see them. And I will bring the tissues because I cry when I see the students dance because it's such a wonderful thing. And the things that they are learning through the dance program is beyond just learning the dance skills. They learn respect. They learn social emotional skills. They learn body-positive things. They learn how to work with other people. One of the young men speaking today talked about dance as a team, as like a team sport. He plays other sports. And when you're dancing, that's your teammate. And when one of you is uncertain or kind of messing up, the other person is there to be your teammate and help you through. And I just thought, what a great message for our students. So this is a program at Riverside and Gage. Pinewood has done it as well. But for fifth-grade students, it's a 10-week program. And if you hear about it or get a chance to see the students, I encourage you to do that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, 4.0, Consent Agenda. Any items that Board would like to take off for separate
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We do have one retirement that was in the consent agenda. We have Kathleen King, elementary paraprofessional at Sunset Terrace Elementary School. Her retirement effective at the end of the day, December 31st, 2018. Ms. King has been with the district for 28 years. So we thank Ms. King for her service to our district.
Thank you. 5.01, Mr. Schlusner.
I move to take from the table agenda item 501, Approval of Presence of Mind and Student Well-being, Scalable Multimedia Mindfulness Training for Youth Research Study from the November 13th, 2018 meeting.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we...
Take this from the table.
Take this from the table. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So it's not an action item. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the research study Presence of Mind and Student Well-being, Scalable Multimedia Mindfulness Training for Youth.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I have one question. We didn't pass this last time either. That was only consent agenda. We didn't. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. No. Your Honor. 5.02, Facilities Task Force Update. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to call Kevin Holmes from LHB and our two co-chairs for
Good evening again. Seems like we're a regular stand-up group here each and every time. Again, we are here to kind of give you an update again from the Facilities Planning Group and our committee. And then there's a two-step process here this evening. Again, we're going to do some reviews, talk about the middle school attendance boundary options again, and any new updates that you have or that we have.
Some of the items that we previously covered, the capacities of facilities, short-term boundary options, the housing study, goals and recommendations, and information-based capacity options, and additional needs, and citizen feedback.
Referendum goals that were set forth within the committee. Again, this is driven by the capacity for a capital referendum. And we want to make sure that all of our discussions centered around the capacity of each one of our elementaries, middle schools, and our high schools as we went through and continue to go through this process. We want to maximize the balance of our diversity, maximize walkability, maximize the district efficiencies, and minimize future boundary changes as much as we can. One of the other items that we've added to this slide is the facility improvements efficiencies, which directly support the Rochester Public Schools' strategic plan. And as we've had many discussions about each one of those bullet points, it continually comes back to the strategic plan of safety, students first, ensuring the safety for our staff. How can we create spaces for our staff in the 21st century? And what is learning going to be like as we move down this road? Someone said earlier this evening, I'm going to hitchhike on this, destinations to a particular school. We want every one of our schools to be a destination here in Rochester Public Schools, not just one or two, but every one of them. And I think as this committee reviewed the facilities and the needs within those facilities, that's what's driving us to bring these items forward for you this evening, is that global perspective, that 50,000-foot view of Rochester Public Schools and how much it's going to change, short-term and long-term. And it's interesting how we can't predict very long-term for us. But within the next five years, I think we're very comfortable in what we're talking about within this group. So that's how we feel that we support the strategic plan as a committee as we go through.
Yeah, before we go on to the next slide, I want to talk a little more about that. When we talk about balancing diversity, we're not talking about just race. We're talking about poverty as well. So that's something that was the task force goal, was to try to accomplish that. As far as increasing walkability, I think that connects very closely to our first goal, which is access, equity in access. And not only does this, obviously, does, you know, the more students that we have that can walk to school, maybe we can save some money on transportation. But really, we have some families that, if they're not able to walk to school, they may not be able to be engaged in their child's education. When we talk about district efficiencies, the more money we save, we can put back into the classroom in educating our students, and then trying to minimize or reduce future boundary changes as much as possible. But really, I see this as the first step in designing facilities that will enable us to change the way we teach our students. You know, if we're going to get at the graduate profile, we have to change how we do business. And we have to have a facility that helps teachers change the way they teach. And by potentially redesigning two or three elementaries, building a new elementary and a new middle school, we can start that process by trying to redesign our facilities so we can better get at the graduate profile that we have created as part of our strategic plan.
So there were quite a few conversations about small schools, large schools, and we thought maybe it made sense to go back and take a look at what we're actually talking about here. So small schools would be the less than 400. Medium-sized schools would be 400 to about 800. And then a large school would be, and this is elementary size, elementary large school would be 800 to 12 or 13 or 1400. So we're not really talking about large schools. We're talking about medium-sized schools. And what we're really talking about is a four-section school for each grade level instead of a two-section school. The other nice piece about that four-section piece is if it's a title school, it then becomes, it's a large, it's more classrooms, so it's a five-section building, which, when you do grade advance from kindergarten based on your class size, first grade, and then second through fifth, you have a natural progression of six kindergarten rooms, five first-grade rooms, four. Now, that doesn't mean that you have to stay with the class sizes that you've determined already. You can change those. And a larger building gives you more flexibility in class size. So when we talk about equity in services, you're able to have full-time individuals at these buildings. So they're there every single day that the students are there, and the students have access to those individuals. With the smaller schools, it's a much more costly effect to try and have somebody in a building the entire time. I talked about the flexibility in enrollment already. Leveling of class size, we've talked about that a little bit. Again, if you have a two-section school and you have a bubble class going through that's 64, 66 kids instead of the 50 kids, you just went from 25 students a class to 32 or 33 students a class, or you're paying for an entirely new teacher. When you get four sections going through, that levels out those bubbles that can happen. Operational savings, we'll talk about that in a lot more detail further in the process. And then the big piece of balancing diversity, the small neighborhood schools that only serve a neighborhood take on the characteristics of a neighborhood. If you increase the size of that building, you're able to bring in students from outside those neighborhoods and make sure that you have that diversity and mix at all of your buildings, not just at a few of your buildings. Lower construction cost per student is also a piece that we'll talk about. So the second slide starts to look at some of those elements. So construction cost, and actually, that should be project cost, and I apologize for that. The construction cost of a 720-student building is about 24, 25 million in the estimates that we have. When you include the project costs, that's fixture furnitures and equipment, that's all the other permit fees, design fees, those types of things. It's about 32 million. So that slide, I apologize, should say project cost, not construction cost. But the numbers are accurate. 32 million for one 720-student building versus 49 million 600,000 for two 360-student buildings. And this is trying to make sure that both building types have the same attributes. So that does mean that that 360-student building that's identified there is based under the standards of the 720 versus what some of your current buildings are, which are much smaller buildings and share spaces. The operations piece, I had mentioned before, that we've considered it basically a million dollars per building. We'll take a look at some of your existing comparisons of buildings right now and the operational costs in just in the next slide. So one of the other clarifications that we need to make sure we talk about is the fact of small schools versus small class sizes, or small class sizes equals small schools. That's not, they're not equal. The other day, when we heard a lot of people talk about, we love our small class sizes in our small schools. The class sizes are the same, or maybe even larger than what they would be in a larger school. So the number of students in a classroom is completely independent of the number of classrooms in the building. And then just talking about your neighborhood schools specifically, we've got two different color texts up there. So Bamber, Franklin, Gage, Gibbs, and Sunset are all 720 or larger. There was a conversation, should Riverside be in there? Because at one time Riverside had 700 or more students in it as well. But we've put it in the other category because based on the way the programming is there now, we're not advocating that it be a 700-student building. So then you have Bishop Churchill, Falwell, Jefferson, Hoover, Pinewood, Riverside are the smaller buildings. So you're not quite a half-half, yeah.
So what schools do we have that are only two sections?
Pine Wood.
Falwell. Hoover and Churchill would be if they were K-5, but because they're sister schools, they're multiple sections beyond that.
I have a quick question as well. So from your point of view, from a taxpayer, fiscally responsible point of view, 720 is the most optimal size to build?
Not just from a taxpayer standpoint, but also from an educational standpoint, I would say it's preferred size when you talk about what your constraints are from an education and a fiscal, or from an education standpoint and what you can afford to provide the students.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of your upcoming slides will, I think, reinforce that.
Yep. So this slide here talks about the operational costs. And, you know, we've talked traditional, you know, what our experience is. And I thought the best way to do it was actually do a comparison. So John Carlson was able to give me the actual operating costs of your facilities. And I then put that into a table here so we could take a look at the way it lays out. Churchill and Hoover, as we mentioned, are a K-2, 3, 5 project split. And between the two buildings, there are about 440-some students. So we looked at them both as individual buildings and then as a combined what they are for 440 K through 5 students. The other pieces in there that we're talking about are Falwell, Bishop, Bamber, and Gibbs. And again, this is to show that variation. And you can see, I don't want to say it's a linear path, but there's definitely a pattern of the larger buildings operating more efficiently on a cost per student, which is the second to the right-hand column. So you see that Hoover's at about 10,500, all the way down to Gibbs, which is about 6,500. And that's dollars per student. Your current, and I forgot to add this piece to that slide, but your current funding from the state is about $61, $6200 per student. And then you have other funding mechanisms that fill in that gap and make up that differential.
Quick question. So when you figure out the operational costs, then are you using sort of an average of what the teacher salary, paraprofessional salaries might be? Or did you actually look at the salaries that were actually there now? Because it could be...
This is the actual building cost.
Okay. So there could be a great deal of variation depending on how long your teacher's been in the district, what kind of educational...
Yep, which is why we wanted to make sure we showed the full representation. So this is all of your neighborhood buildings that are not Title I buildings because your Title I funding is, adds a different variation to it. So this is trying to get as close to apples as apples as possible for the comparison. So then when we put it into a table to say, what does that really mean from an operational standpoint? Again, we, so we took it to the next level and said, if all of our facilities were one-way, or if all of our facilities were another way, what would the operating cost be? And you can see if the Churchill Hoover model was the model across the district, it'd be a little over $80 million a year in operational costs just for the elementaries. If you did it from a Gibbs approach, it would be about $51 million, which is a difference of about $28 million per year in operational costs based on the different sizes of buildings and staffing of those facilities. And then if you just compared Falwell, which is a 360-student K through 5, so that went from two buildings of Churchill Hoover down to a single 360, it's about a $12 million differential. So in each case, you can see that that operational savings, especially when you do it across 8,000 students, definitely adds up and makes a pretty sizable difference.
Mr. Smith.
Did the note there, smaller buildings only have partial services? You don't mean they're getting less serviced? They're getting the service proportion to the student population? And since it's shared services, it means there's less cost in the smaller school?
Yeah. So what happens is, for instance, a social worker or a counselor would split their time, one FTE, between two or three buildings. So they're going to be at each building a day and a half or two days out of the week versus every day of the week. So if a student has an issue, they're going to have to find somebody else within that building. And your staff, we've heard a lot from your parents and community members that your staff is great. So I don't doubt that your kids are taken care of. But it's one of those anomalies that we felt it was important to point out.
Would it be possible at some point, Superintendent, to perhaps see what that would look like in terms of a, I'll use the term a whole or complete school, if that is defined as consisting of, what, four sections, where they're rather than partial services where there are full-time?
Yeah. Like, take one of our smaller buildings and just give them a full-time social worker, even though they, right now, they may only have a half of one. Just see what the cost is. Yeah, we talked, I think we talked about that at one of our meetings, trying to show as many ways we can the difference. And we talked about trying to just standardize the staffing and then see what the difference will look like. But I guess that's something we can attempt to do.
Mr. Smith.
A quick addition to Director Smith is, one of the things that was shared at the committee meeting is when you have these partial services across the schools, is the folks providing the partial services don't feel they can build a strong relationship as much with the students, which is critically important. In fact, there's one example where I believe it was a social worker spread across four schools that didn't feel she could have nearly that level of relationship, especially in her position, with the students.
All right. So that kind of, we're going to transition now to talk about the middle school population, where it's going in three years and part of that process. Again, we're going to be talking about boundary option. It's not something that's set in stone. It would be set in 2021, prior to the 2022 school year, assuming that the middle school would come online in 2022. So this first table basically shows what happens when you just grade-advance students. So the kids that are currently in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, if we move them ahead three years, and now they're in, or excuse me... three years, and now they're in, or excuse me, third, fourth, and fifth into sixth, seventh, and eighth, the, the enrollment capacity, or the enrollment value then changes. So, that second column that says "student live-in" is the, is the column that you want to look at for that grade advance and what happens. So, what you see is, if the boundaries didn't change, Kellogg's student population would be within the capacity, but both John Adams and Willow go up significantly. So, you're seeing a need for a boundary change in the future, just based on your current students' grade advancing. That's not including any additional students that might come in with families moving in with those age students. So, something will need to be done at some point in time. You may actually need to do a boundary change before the new middle school opens, because this is gonna, it's not just going to happen overnight. It's going to start to occur and, and continue to occur over the next, over the next three years. So, when we talk about adding that fourth middle school, which, again, middle school is one of the pieces in the, in the design piece, and what that boundary might look like. Again, what we're trying to do with the, with the boundary pieces is balance that diversity and also try and make sure that we're, ultimately, the, the perfect goal would be to have every elementary school track right up into a middle school, and the middle school track right up into the, into a high school. Because you don't have that clean-cut piece right now, based on the number of buildings you have in the, in the student populations, we, we tried hard to get to that point, but we weren't able to achieve it in a way that we felt was a good balance. So, in this case, you will see that both the new elementary boundary and the Gage boundary are, are split between John Adams and Kellogg. And that had to be done to, to help balance the, the loads, because as you saw on the previous table, John Adams was, was overloaded. So, the, the blue would be Kellogg, red is John Adams, the purplish color in the southwest is the new middle school, and then the green is, is Willow. We do still have some, some variation in the actual demographics here. When we talk about the, the SES or the, the free and reduced lunch program, you'll see that Willow is still a little bit higher than we would like it to be. And then when you look at the bottom slide, that's the variation of now pulling out the current students that would go to Lincoln and having them go to the K-8 Lincoln. So, it changes the, the demographics a little bit, not, not significantly, because it's only 140-some kids, but-
Yeah, I, I just want to comment too, that one of the questions we've, have gotten asked, "Why are we putting the, the new middle school in the southwest?" And the rationale behind that is that the, the data shows probably in 10 years, we're going to need a fourth high school. So, it makes sense to have the fourth high school in the southwest, so we have a high school in each corner. So, your new middle school would feed into the someday-new high school, so that's why the task force is looking in the, the southwest for the new middle school.
All right. Any questions on the middle school concept? Yeah?
Yeah, so, looking at this, then, it, it looks like, then, that Fidel's going to be, is going to disappear.
The intent is that the Fidel building would still be utilized for district programming.
I'm talking about the students who are currently there. They would go to the larger middle school, then, or to whatever their neighborhood?
Again, the, the, what you do with the district options is still up to the board and, and the, and the district as a whole at the end of the day. You could move those programs into the new middle school and change the boundaries into a school within a school, and have that as well as, as the neighborhood students. Or you could provide gifted and talented at every building, for instance.
And that, that seemed to be what the task force favored more, of just having a highly gifted program in every high, or every middle school. And I think if you remember when we were talking about adding the program at Kellogg, we did have a conversation about just having, having one in every middle school. And so, I, I think that's where the task force is right now, that they would recommend having one in each middle school.
So, Ms. Workman's point, that would show Fidel no longer being a middle school.
And though it is true that the task force simply is providing relevant information, the survey or the referendum is not programmed based or driven in terms of what the vote, voters will not be asked to decide on where they want the placement of programs. So, while this is simply useful information for us to be aware of, the referendum, the survey won't actually mine down to this level, is that correct?
Yes. All right. I think that was the last slide of them. Thanks, Mark.
Is there any more questions before we move on to the next? Do the next one?
So, that was just the update, correct?
Yeah.
Now, we're getting to-
Okay. Five-point-old approval of facility recommendations by the facilities task force. This is an action item, Mr. Moore.
Yes. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Kevin and our co-chairs to brief us on this.
And I'm back again. So, agenda for, for this portion is the, we want to talk about the southeast boundary a little bit. Again, boundary isn't being defined today, but this does have an impact when we talk about whether or not Longfellow is, is part of the capacity increase piece. So, we want to make sure we have that conversation at some level. The task force had some feedback on that, that, that I'll let them react to and add to. Then the base scope question, so we have, we just had a meeting, phone conference last week with Mike, Heather, myself, and, and Jason from CRW to talk a little bit more about the, about the question process. And so, what we, what we've talked about is there'd be a base question, and then there would be additional pieces that we would get feedback or, or barometer-level readings on, which will then give the group of school perceptions the ability to make recommendations to you on what is most likely to, to be a favorable vote on, on the day of the referendum. So, what we're asking for today is basically the approval for the questions that the school perceptions task force and cabinet will then formulate and put verbiage to. Again, that survey would be mailed out to your residents, and the intent, the hope is that we would get somewhere between 10 and 20 percent. Usually, it's, it's a, it's a range within that response of, of actual registered voters. And that will give enough of a reading of whether or not, what the tax impact capability is as far as your, your voters, as well as which elements they see the value in and would support in that referendum process. So, that feedback would come back to you. I think we've talked, March 5th would be the timeframe that they would present it to you, which gives us the time to have them present February 26th to the task force, and the task force to be able to, to react and respond and provide guidance as they have along the way. So, so when we talk about the, the boundary piece, this image that you see up here shows Pinewood as a neighborhood school and Longfellow as a, as a neighborhood school, as well as Ben Franklin as a neighborhood school. And again, with the proximity of, of Franklin, Pinewood, and Longfellow, you have a lot of walkers that are shared in some cases, and you do have a walking boundary of, of 11th, which does separate Longfellow, Pinewood on one side and, and Franklin on the other. So, when we talk about what that looks like from a demographic standpoint, this is without students going into the district-wide options, so this is basically a live-in. You'll see that some of the numbers do kind of get outside of that boundary. Pinewood ends up going quite low in the free and reduced and students of color, and then that pushes both Franklin and, and Longfellow, Longfellow up in those numbers. And then when you look at it within the district-wide options, you'll see something similar. The other anomaly that we run into is, even though we have student population increase down there, we have a hard time, I shouldn't say a hard time, Pinewood doesn't hit its full capacity without going out and trying to, trying to grab more students, because you have, again, three, three buildings trying to share a walk boundary zone and area. When we look at the proposed option concept, and again, the boundaries aren't exact, and we show Longfellow crossing 11th, where I think we let 11th be the, be the dividing line, you'll start to see that the demographics piece for Longfellow and Franklin even out quite a bit and provide that, get, get closer to the, to the district average for your elementary students on free and reduced and students of color. The next option shows what it looks like if we use the, the enrollment for your district-wide options, and you'll actually see that the buildings that have high free and reduced and a higher percentage of students of color, those percentages actually bump up a little bit, and that's where the, the conversation about a district-wide option, having the second criteria of favoring students of, of poverty or, or free and reduced and students of color to get into the district-wide options to help balance all of your buildings across the board from that level. So, when the task force saw this information and they looked at it, it was a pretty overwhelming response. Actually, Mark, do you want to talk? The, the task force definitely felt that it, it made sense for Longfellow to be the neighborhood school at 720. One other piece of information which we've done since then, there's about 124 students that can walk to Pinewood. Fifty-five of those would be able to walk to the Longfellow site. Longfellow has about 360, if you add those 55, maybe as much as 400 students that could walk to the Longfellow site. So, you're talking about a differential of, of students that would be able to walk, many more can walk to the Longfellow site based on location and, and density of the student population around the buildings.
Want to go first, or does it make a difference?
No, go ahead. I can't-
Okay, so, we went horse all of a sudden. Okay, so, the committee did spend a great deal of time talking about this Pinewood-Longfellow situation and how closely, as Kevin said, the proximity of the two buildings are with each other. One of the driving common denominators that came out is that southeast corridor really needs some help with future growth. And that density area down there, we really need to make sure that we're taking care of that corner of Rochester as we, we look at this. And the current spot for Longfellow doesn't offer us that flexibility of possibly building in the current site, plus keeping the school open. So, that's why we're kind of looking at different property down in that area to see if, by moving that building closer to Pinewood, would keep it more of a walkable area for the vast majority of the, those two communities. We really understand the significance of that walkability and that closeness to that school community, as we've heard over and over again. But I, I think the driving factor for this group was that southeast corridor is growing, and we need to make sure that we look closely at building capacity in that area. And part of that is the Montessori at Franklin moving out, which gives us more capacity at Ben Franklin for some of this overcrowding that we're seeing down there, but also just that new location and having Pinewood, the flexibility of whatever program we're putting in those two buildings, whether it's a 4515 at Pinewood only, 4515 at Longfellow, and the new building, I think that still is total flexibility that we're looking for in that area.
So, my, my question now is, and I understand the work you've done, and, and that's important, but the discussion we're having now is what's going to be on this survey? And it seems to me, just my opinion, that down the road, we need to talk about Longfellow, keep 4515 there, do something else. Pinewood, what are we going to do with that? What are we going to do with the boundaries to make sure that they're all working? But right now, the focus is, what do we need to build and where do we need to build it? And, and everything you've talked about is really important, but the emotion is all around, "Where is my kid going to go to school?" And don't change my boundaries. So, I'm thinking if we can just focus on the survey and getting out to people, "This is where we want to build, this is what it's going to cost." If we could just focus on that and then get back to those other discussions, which are important ones, down the road after we already know what we're, what's been approved.
That is correct. The, and I hate to talk boundaries after you just said it's not about boundaries-
So, just don't.
But I have, I have to a little bit. One of the other pieces that, that is lending to the Longfellow piece is currently, and most of the public may not know this, but you're busing a large number of students from the Longfellow and Riverside area across the district to go to Bamber. So, we're trying to keep those neighborhood students near their building so that both they can get to the building and their parents have ready access to the building and their students' education. So, trying to bring those students back to a, to a neighborhood concept is, is the big piece here in what we're trying to achieve. So, that does show some of that, and I know that's, we're not talking boundaries, but that's one of the reasons that we're trying to increase the capacity the way we are in the southeast.
Yeah.
Just a quick add-on to the need for increased capacity in the southeast is, we've discussed this as, as a group, but just a reminder for everybody out there, that when you look at multifamily housing over the next five years, 50% is in the southeast part of Rochester.
So?
Huge need for capacity increase in southeast Rochester.
Great point.
And as I said, it's opening up the space at Ben Franklin, plus the additions that we've talked about.
Ms. Workman.
I have a quick question about the capacity, or what's going to happen at Hoover and Churchill once the Mon, if the Montessori students go to Hoover? Does Hoover, I mean, what happens to the students who are currently at Hoover? Or does Hoover have enough room right now to absorb all the Montessori students?
Yeah, I can answer that. Most of the students that currently attend neighborhood Hoover would be in walk zone to Elton Hills, so they would go to Elton Hills.
Okay.
Then, I think the option has currently, if we do not expand it to 600 to 720, it would be just a walk zone around Churchill would be attending that school. There would be nobody bused there. It'd be whatever our mile-and-a-half perimeter is, anybody within that would go to Churchill.
Okay, so we would still have K through two?
Churchill would be K-5.
Okay, five.
K-2 would go away.
Okay.
And we'll talk about that a little bit in the, in the actual question up here. So, any questions on the demographics and the information relative to, to the Longfellow expansion to 720?
I have one. Earlier, you made reference to the impact of those who are on free and reduced lunch and students of color. Do you actually have any, I guess I'm wondering, are, they're not necessarily one and the same, are they?
No.
Okay. And I think that was important to establish. And so, and I'm sure somewhere you are able to, you have graphically shown those two items together, haven't you, on?
We haven't shown it in a graphic response, only in a spreadsheet format like we have here, that shows what it is for the current live-in boundary and then what it is. So, if you, if you look at the graph that's up there right now, we have the current live-in boundary, and then we have the conceptual boundary, proposed boundary, and how those percentages change based on that.
So, the goal, then, and perhaps as Superintendent, though you may very well know as well, there's a desire to have a balance of students of color and free and, free and reduced SES. And that is required by whom? State, feds, or?
No, the only requirement that we have to be careful of is if a school becomes 20% higher than our district average, then they are identified. A few years ago, Gage, students of color percentage was more than 20% than our district average, so they were identified as racially isolated. So, then, that's why we put the, the Spanish immersion program in there. We just, this year, no, I guess, excuse me, end of last year, received notice that Riverside has been identified. So, we're working with the school on NMD to create a, a plan to address that. So, they do not have that same requirements for free and reduced, but they do have it for students of color.
Ms. Linder.
So, if, if our crunch point is the southeast, why are we talking about building a new school northwest? northwest?
All of your buildings are at 98% plus or minus. When you look at the elementary level, some of them are at 102, 103%. So the northwest is an area where you have growth and where you, where you have students. So that's a, a new building up there and you continue to grow that way. When you look at where the single-family homes were built, and if you go back to student yield, that's the highest student yield. The greatest number of single-family homes that you have is actually in the Bamber, which is the southwest, which is why we're trying to, you know, have some of the Franklin boundaries move over and, and some of that type of thing to, to capture some of those students. And then you do have some pocketed single-family in the southeast as well as the multifamily that's, that's popping up in the southeast. Now, the, the positive note for the demographics of the, of the multifamily is there's not much below market rate type stuff. It's a lot of its market rate. So the hope would be that that would start to help with, with the demographics as well as those buildings fill and, and hopefully bring down the free and reduced percentages in those buildings.
So tell me if this is an accurate, an accurate understanding. So you said a few minutes ago that the Hoover kids would go to Elton Hills or some of those would go to Elton Hills. We already know Elton Hills is full. So that means those students are going to have to push out somewhere and so presumably we would be looking at something that's going to just kind of squish students up to the northwest?
So.
For like, I mean, that's a real technical term, I know, squish.
So, and, and that gets into the, the question on, on the Churchill piece as well.
Right.
So I'm going to flash up these, the, the two boundary pieces. Take a look at the north half of the, of the district this time. So this one shows the new elementary school spanning from the west side to the east side and then basically north of Gage. It shows Gage going all the way across the district out to the east and then it shows Churchill as a small pocket. So this is the version where Churchill doesn't get expanded. It's a 288 K through five, fully walkable. Elton is the brown spot just to the south of Gage, which is the big bright blue and west of, of Churchill. And so that is a fully walkable 400 and some student, I've lost that number in my head, I apologize, fully walkable facility. And then fall well down below was being expected to be a fully walkable facility. So in this version, you have three small neighborhood schools that are very prox, very close proximity to other buildings and are kind of geographically trapped by these other buildings. So we're treating them as, as walkable sites. When we go to this one, you can see that this version now is Churchill is being expanded to have more capacity. So now Churchill, the dark blue, is starting to expand out beyond that little walkable pocket. And Gage then rotates up and then the new elementary is everything west of the river. And so in this version, what we're actually showing is the ability to take additional or more student growth through the housing growth that's happening up there in the northwest. And that's where Churchill becomes that optional question of, does the community believe that we have that much growth in the northern part of the district that we want to add more capacity through the, through the referendum to, to achieve some of that? And so what we've talked about is providing a nice, simple graph that shows this is the projections of, of student growth. This is what a high, high version of that would be if you have the expanded growth and expansion. And then this is what a, a, you know, a moderate increase would be. So that you can see how those three factors relate to the, the capacity that you're creating. Yeah.
You know, it's, it's impossible to, to look at this and not think about boundaries and where, where kids go because just the whole purpose of this exercise is about balancing the building capacities within the district to take care of the total district's need for the, for the least amount of money and least amount of disruption while, while trying to maximize walkability and, and diversification and everything. So I know it's tempting for us to always kind of go back to the, you know, what happens to this student or that student or this, but for this, and you'll have to do, the board's going to have to deal with that discussion at, at some point. But these options do infer boundaries here. I mean, there, there are boundaries inferred in this. So it's impossible to totally ignore that. So, so the, what takes precedent, I think the board has to ask us, what takes precedent? What are we doing with individual students and where, how the boundaries might shift around income or what's going to maximize the, the building capacity and the benefit of our buildings to the total, to the total district and the operation of, of the district on an efficient basis? And I know it's always tempting to kind of think about how this may impact this school or that school or this neighborhood or that, that neighborhood. But I, I really think you guys have done a, a good job of trying to listen to, to as much as that as you can and take that into consideration while at the same time balancing that against the total needs of the district and what we see demographically and where growth is going to be occurring, where it's, has occurred in the district, where it's likely to occur in the future. It's a, it's a very difficult balancing act and the, the board, and I know, I trust the board will, and a couple of us won't be here when this is ultimately decided, but you know, I do trust the, the board will take, you know, look at the whole district as a whole and not overreact to, you know, one school's, you know, neighborhood's desires to keep things the way they are. I mean, the world's changing, our community's changing, it requires that we all have to change. And I guess I've found in 66 years I've been here that kids are a lot more adaptable than adults. But that's, that's.
And just, Mr. Smith, to your point too, that, I mean, the challenge is that we're, we're looking at schools and a plan for maybe the next 20 years.
Right.
You know, it's not just for the kids who are there now, it's what's it going to look like in 20 years? Maybe, and I'll just say this, but I don't mean it, maybe we'll have all magnet schools at that point. Who knows? Sorry. And we won't. But who knows what it's going to look like, what kind of changes there are? Maybe the, we'll go beyond that. But there could be some big changes in the way we educate kids. Maybe we'll have more K-8 schools, maybe we'll have K-12 schools. So we, we have to think long-term and where we're going to have enough space and appropriate space to put all the kids we have now and that we will have going forward.
I wasn't quite finished.
Oh, sorry.
I was going to say that, you know, change is a, is a, is a difficult thing and, you know, change is okay as long as it doesn't happen to me. And if it has to happen, I guess I prefer it happens to somebody else and not me. But, you know, unfortunately, I get older and I wish that change would happen to somebody else, but it does. So it's really about anticipating that change and using that change, you know, to our advantage for the community, to our advantage as a community and for the benefit of, of the community. Change is imminent, change is going to happen. We can't, we can't, can't change that. If we're growing, it's going to happen. If you're not growing, that forces change in another direction. But I trust the board that in the long run, you know, we'll keep focused on the district as a whole here and what's going to be the long-term and trying to anticipate the future needs of the district and, and, you know, do that accordingly. That's what the survey, in my mind, you know, should be driving at, those kinds of ques, and asking the public's opinion about that, are we on the right track? Thinking about that and trying to put aside the individual thing, but what, what are people's view of the, the way of approaching this, you know, from a district-wide lens instead of a neighborhood or a school, individual school lens? That's it.
Mr. Schlesner.
Kind of add-on a little bit to, to your notes of the, the boundaries. You know, from this process point of view, kind of like the title says, it's conceptual. So I, I think the way that the board and the community should look at this is we're just seeing if it's plausible to put these schools where we think they should go. There's nothing concrete here, it's conceptual. And of course, with our theory of where the schools should go, we have to have the supporting evidence to say, yeah, it makes total sense to put it where it's being recommended. So again, just think of these boundaries as plausible options that will be discussed years down the road. But I, I do think it does make a lot of sense to present it this way.
Well, if I could just quickly, it is labeled conceptual, but there's a reality and the reality is the community's growing. And that's not being, that's not a dispute. And, and so I definitely am in agreement with Director Smith's comments that he won't have to make the decision, but we will. And, and that I think we, as long as we anticipate the future needs of the community, I'm sure we will, and with the advice and input from the community, I'm sure we'll know and hear and make a wise decision.
I do think Ann and Gary should come back and sit the audience that night.
Well, I do appreciate Mr. Smith.
Let him come up and do public comments.
That you volunteered to give your phone number to everybody so we.
Oh, I think they have. I think probably they have.
All right. So then we get to the, the base survey question. So the base survey question would be strictly about the capacity needs, going back to what's, what's driving this piece. So it would be a new elementary on the existing property in the northwest. It would be reconstructing Bishop to 720 student capacity, reconstructing Longfellow to a 720 student capacity. And the other pieces don't need to be included in there because those are program changes. Moving the Montessori up does provide that additional 200 students at, at the Ben Franklin site. And then the last piece of the capacity is the middle school at 1,200 students in the southwest corner on a property that's to be determined. The pieces that we've talked about breaking out separate for a barometer question piece are the security, safety and security. And it would be for the secure entries, not the other remaining portions that were unfunded at, at part of the state request. So it's about a $2 million value versus a $6.3 million value. The other piece would be the additional property if you were going to look at a combined site. So the base question for the survey will be the 37 to 40 acres for a middle school and then the barometer question for the survey would be the additional 80 acres so that you could put an elementary school and a middle school, or elementary and a high school at that site at some point in time in the future so that you have this campus feel in that southwest. The other pieces would be, and this is where it comes back to the Churchill piece, the conversation there is putting the survey question in. Again, the task force said if we're going to rebuild it to 600, why wouldn't we just build it to 720 so that we have that capacity and that capability? So we thought that we would put it in the survey question as reconstruct Churchill to a 720 student capacity on the existing site. And then the other three questions are working towards improvements and equity at the high schools and operational savings as well. There would be some minor operational savings with the, with the high, I shouldn't say minor. There'd be some operational savings to the high school auditorium piece because right now you currently rent equipment for some of the programs and your systems aren't as efficient as what the new systems are. The big operational savings piece is the pool concept. You'd be closing three older pools that have long-term facility maintenance needs as well as aren't going to operate as efficiently as a new pool would. So you'd be going from three pools at the middle schools to one additional pool at the high school. So you'd have three pools in the district instead of five. So that'd be a pretty considerable operational savings. And then the last piece is creating the site, site equity at the three high school sites relative to amenities for spectators and visitors as well as storage needs and athletic facilities.
So Kevin, with each, with each question, there'll be a little bit of a descriptor explaining why we're asking that particular question.
Yep, it would identify the needs, it would identify the estimated cost associated with that, and then it would provide the question of, do you feel as a taxpayer that you would support this element of the, of, if it was part of the referendum?
Mr. Schlesner.
So, so on a note, for the safety and security piece, you'd mentioned two levels basically, 2 million and 6 million. Is that when you'd spell out what 2 million would get the district and what 6 million would? I don't believe I've seen those differentiated in detail yet.
We, in some of the previous presentations, we did have the breakdown of the legislative requests. The $2 million is the secure entries and that'll actually go down a little bit because part of, one of the secure entries is at Bishop, which when Bishop gets rebuilt, that pulls that money off the table. So we'll fine tune those numbers to some degree, still, again, making sure that they're adequate. But the safety and security piece would be strictly secure entries, meaning when you come to the building, the first place you're allowed to go is the, the only place you're allowed to go is the, is the high school, or excuse me, the, the building office to be let in and credentialed and checked.
I think after a lot of discussion, we decided to take off the other security, safety, the other, what is it, 4 million, 6 million?
4.3 million.
Yeah, that, not that be part of the referendum, just the secured entrance piece.
I think it might be worthwhile to see what the community thinks on that. A lot of people take security pretty serious and might be willing to help out with that.
Well, I wonder if that's one of the things we can talk about when we discuss options. But my understanding is that right now, the recommendation is that the board would suggest on the survey, we would say that we'd like to build a new elementary northwest, expand Bishop and Longfellow, build a new middle school southwest, get additional property, 120 acres maybe, additional property southwest for other buildings down the road and then provide secure entrances for all our buildings. We're not going to have on the survey, moving programs, any of that. So it's just what do we want to build, where do we want to build it? Do I have that right?
Correct.
And then options would be swimming pool, expand Churchill and so on.
Yes.
It's about physical infrastructure.
Phys, absolutely.
Yep.
And I have one question, Matt. When, in your, in your estimate, did you look, I assume you did, or maybe just use standardized cost per, on the infrastructure cost that were the northwest side, that the city infrastructure is actually there in proximity to the sites already and we're not going to find some, you know, some costs all of a sudden are extending, it's going to be, going to add another million dollars because we got to extend the water or sewer that we've didn't think about? Would that, would that take into consideration?
We have had some conversations, the northwest site, we own that, we know exactly where it is, we know where the utilities are. So that one's defined. The southwest site until, until we enter negotiations with property owners or until your realtor enters negotiations with the property owners, we won't be able to weigh the, the cost of land versus the expense of extending utilities and that type of thing. And then the question would be, you know, would the district be able to be reimbursed if you extended past properties as development continues out to the building, if that's the case? So.
Ms. Becker.
So on, so for the survey questions, is there going to be like background information given?
Yes.
So, so like how many students we feel are, I mean, because if you just look, oh wow, another 720 and, you know, increase this capacity, but if you don't know anything about how many students we feel are going to be coming. Okay.
Ms. Ruckman.
So in the, in the base question, you don't include Churchill expanding at all.
Correct.
The second question you do. My question is for, to meet our capacity needs, do we need to have that expansion at Churchill in addition to everything else that's in the base question?
Based on the projected growth of about 600 students in five years, 600 additional elementary students in, in five years, we're projecting, so the top line of this talks about the capacity increase, we're saying 1,476 without the Churchill increase in size. So again, the, one of the goals was to get to 90% occupancy or capacity in five years so that you're not immediately having to go through boundary adjustments and all that kind of stuff on a, on a regular basis. So trying to create that cushion that either accounts for faster growth that can't be predicted or longer-term growth at the rate that you're at before you hit that capacity issue. Did that answer your question?
Not really. A little bit.
So we're projecting 1,476 additional capacity and we're only showing a 600 additional students at the K through five range. So we're, we're building in 800 additional capacity over the growth that we have, which puts us a little below the 90% capacity.
Kevin, I don't remember if you remember the numbers top of your head, I don't, but I know when we had the different options, the option one that had Churchill, I think it had it at what percentage capacity? Was it 80, 88, I think?
I think 83.
83 and then the, the option without it had us at 88 then?
Yes, correct.
So it, it does lower overall capacity at the elementary. So it does lower overall capacity at the elementary.
And then, and then the other question, it's quite some time ago, we had a big discussion about making Longfellow bigger, and I don't remember the time if that was to turn it into a K-8 school, but we were talking about additional classrooms, and for some reason, that wasn't going to work. And I don't remember if there wasn't enough space to move out, or we couldn't build a second story because of the bill. I guess the question I asked is.
Yes, yes to both of those. It's not designed, matter of fact, I don't think any of our buildings are designed to go up.
Right.
And there wasn't enough space. We're probably under the requirements at Longfellow as it is now, but I think we were able to count some of the city.
Space around it.
Space as part of our, like we do at Gibbs is the same way, and Churchill's the same That's why we're looking at a new land to build that 720, or repur, we talked about repurposing FOO. If we build on the same piece of land, which we would, the base would probably be the same, but we would build this so we could go up, we would have to probably move the Longfellow students in Fidel for a year while their building is being built.
Okay. But it's, I mean, it's, the property is doable to put that size of an elementary school on it?
Yeah.
It wasn't doable leaving everything the way it had been?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we, we didn't commit to doing something and then discover it's not possible to engineer it.
No. That's why we hire these experts.
Uh, yeah.
It's just, it'll be a cost to them.
Yeah.
So, so I think this is an action item, I've forgotten. Anyway, it will be at some point. Will we see the questions before they go out again?
Yes.
Okay.
What we need from you tonight is just, this is what we should include. We'll work with the, the company to design the questions, we'll get some feedback from the task force before we bring them to you.
Then I don't need to ask any more questions.
We, we don't have in board docs right now, and certainly we can have more discussion about this, but we don't have in board docs the question or the document that we're going to be voting, that you're proposing, because this is, is not exactly it. So I don't know, can you modify this one while it's on there to just take away, and maybe, again, I'm overstepping here, take away the neighborhood 4515, move Montessori at Hoover, move Newcomer Spanish immersion program? Can you just take those out?
Those are program, those are programming issues.
So basically, so basically what we need is a new 720, and we need to take two of our current buildings and expand them to 720.
Yes.
I mean, we've looked, you've looked at where the optimal placement of those is.
Correct.
But I mean, in terms of the voters who are going to, especially the 80% who don't have kids in the public schools, are going to be looking at, what's the dollar line? You know, the bottom line is how much is it going to cost, right?
Yep.
I won't say all of them don't care if it's Bishop, or if it's Longfellow, or, you know, if it's somewhere else at this point. And so I, I don't know if it would be helpful to the community to leave that a little bit more open-ended in terms of, you know, do we want to specify Bishop and Longfellow at this point, even though that's where we think they would probably be? Or is it, is it easier for the public to conceptualize what that might be like?
Yeah, I think if you don't specify a location, then, especially now that it's already been indicated or projected that it would be this way, if you don't specify a location, then you have more unrest about, well, are they going to do it to my building? Boy, I hope my building is the new building. You know, you've got all that speculation going on instead of a defined value, and it definitely seems anytime you can provide definition during the referendum phase, you have a lot more buy-in and success.
Utilized confidence.
Are we, I was going to say, are we comfortable? No, we're not yet.
Sorry, I'm not quite comfortable. Thinking about, I'm trying to get into other persons, I'm trying to get into somebody else's head.
Mine's too crowded, so don't worry.
In terms of the amount of information, so when I look at the optional thing, the closing the pools, for example, right, so to someone who, maybe our fellow friends who don't have a middle schooler yet, doesn't really know about that, we kind of know, okay, if we close a pool, we have options to do something with that space. Is there any, how can we, how can we talk about that without necessarily a cost associated to that? Does that make sense to you?
So we will identify costs for each one of these elements. We actually have already. I would definitely call them more budget-based costs.
Right.
So the next piece now is to, to go to that next level, one of the discussions was one of the pools may be large enough to actually put a gymnastics gym in it. And so part of the question is then, do we want to go to that level of conversation that that space would be that way, and then the other spaces could be some other programmed event?
I'm just thinking of a, of a consumer looking at the survey, just seeing, you're going to close the three middle school pools, well, then what are you doing with that space? You know, and I don't know what we would say to them at now, and we don't obviously have any decisions about that, but, you know, I don't know, just thinking about how that might confuse people a little bit.
And we do have dollars associated with that to retrofit those spaces to some.
I think, I think it may be easier for the board that, once we bring the actual survey to you, because you'll, you'll see there's going to be an explanation of what that item is, and I think he even talked about, talked about the operational savings we will have by closing the three, I mean, there'll be a good descriptor for every question because not everybody has been following along and attending the citizen voice meetings, so they won't, they won't know what's going on. So there'll be, there'll be some explanation with these questions.
Thank you.
And I have sort of a procedural question then. So if the board agrees that this is what we would like the survey to ask as their primary questions, and these are the optional or the secondary questions, and then after that survey, a draft of is it done, is done with associated costs, at that point when we see it, we can still say judge, that's a poor, judge it a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
I would just suggest that, I would suggest we just go with the recommendation, that's why I'd make a motion to go with the recommendation, let them do the survey, draw the survey up, and then if you want to pull out some of those program questions, you know, you don't, you can, actually, you actually see them, you could probably, easier to pull them out at that point rather than trying to, to do it at this point. Move it around, I would, actually, I'm just going to make, I'll move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. Well, that's not option two, though. I mean, option.
It's not option two.
Sorry, any discussion? Okay, my discussion is.
Let me, let me, let me.
It's that, but there was an option two before, and I don't think it was exactly that.
No, this is slightly different than that, yes.
So if we could just give it a different name even, like, survey-based question.
Well, would it be helpful if we just added, it says, be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize maybe just a facility, improvements or development or whatever word we'd put in there for option two, because then you're just pulling out the buildings piece, not the moving programs around. You're just talking about three elementaries and a new middle school, which is option two.
Of a survey-based question.
For a survey question.
Yep.
Right. So you could change the wording, because I, I think what you're concerned is that the way it's written now, you're saying everything on there is going to be on, on the survey.
Yeah, yeah.
And really, we, we're just talking about the buildings of option two.
Yes. I would just say, I think at this point, I want to, I actually want to appreciate the work the committee has done, first of all, but secondly, if you have the survey and a rolling survey at the point, you can pull those things out of it. At this point, you can, you know, give, go to the work that they've done and see how they would structure the survey, deal with the survey as a separate issue, because you're going to have to approve that at some point, because if you want to remove those questions that deal specifically with programming that, then remove them at that time. But you may, as time goes on, you may want to keep some of those in there. I don't know. I think at this point, you're better to kind of look at where they, where their thinking is and where they're going with the survey, how they construct the survey, and then react to the survey itself, because ultimately, that's what's going to go out. This, this isn't going to.
So.
It's a procedural question.
I would suggest we not approve the resolution.
Remotes.
And then when we come back in December with the actual survey, that's when you can take action on the survey. Really what we need from tonight, from you, is are we all on the same page so we can start developing the actual survey itself? That's really what we need. We probably shouldn't, in hindsight, we probably shouldn't have made an action item, just say, I need consensus from the board, this is what we're going to want on the survey, we'll bring the actual survey back for you to approve.
I think technically, and I'm no Robert's Rules expert, but we would vote this motion down, and someone would make another motion to approve this, we can even say, as discussed, these pieces of, that slide of option two plus the optional ones, because you don't, you don't have the optional questions on this resolution. That would be my.
Or the other option would be for you to withdraw your motion.
We'd still have to vote this one.
Just have to vote it. Just vote it down.
I think we just vote, I think we just vote it down and make a new motion.
Be the simplest thing.
Any more discussion?
Call a question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. Nope, excuse me, take it back.
Focus, people. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion does not pass.
Okay. Amendment motion, someone.
So I would like to make a motion that the survey, I'm trying to look at the language, sorry. That authorize, that we authorize option.
There's no option.
No option.
Oh, that we authorize the survey-based question slide items, new elementary school, reconstruct Bishop, reconstruct Longfellow, new middle school, other safety and security, and, oh, sorry, purchase property, and the next slide, survey questions optional.
As, as the outline for developing the survey.
The outline for developing the survey.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? There's a second. Any discussion? Good motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do have a quick general comment, where I'd really like to see on the third page of every presentation forward of a timeline, what's proposed, what's action, what's concrete, for community clearness of what's going on.
We do have some of those dates right now that I can share. The intent would be, so.
We know you know the dates. We need it on the presentation. So as, as the community members go through the board docs, it's clear in all the presentations what the timelines are. Yeah, that makes sense.
We can do that.
It's easier than going back and saying, well, don't you remember on that August slide, that's when we gave it to you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
5.04 World's Best Workforce Plan update. This is a briefing item.
Yes, we're going to have Brenda come up and brief us on this agenda item.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this plan to you tonight. You know, people have told me since I got this job that I could play that, well, I'm new card for like a year, so I'm hoping it doesn't take me that long to figure things out, but I do have this nice pad of paper here to be able to write down any questions you ask me tonight that I can't answer. So what is the world's best workforce? I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, because I know all of you have heard this before, but this bill was passed in 2013, and this is one thing that I'm learning about, but as part of the statute, this plan is to be developed with input from teachers, parents, support staff, students, and other community residents, and provide translation to the extent that it's appropriate and practicable. And in prior years, the curriculum, Community Curriculum and Advisory Committee, CCIAC, has been the vehicle for that input, but the last time I worked in curriculum and instruction, and it's been many years, those meetings weren't well-attended, and I discovered, when I looked at the, the meeting attendance notes for last year, the meetings that were had, there were usually two or three parents there, and sometimes one or two board members, and it was largely curriculum and instruction staff. And so I think we need to do better than that of getting input. We have, you know, over 18,000 students in our district, and we're getting input from two or three parents? That's not good enough. So we looked at, you know, what do we have out there? What system do we already have in place that is getting a lot of parent feedback? And so it's that family engagement committee, they're getting a lot of people to come, and so we are trying to partner with them this year to get input on this plan, and this plan did get input through early 2018. And if we discover that's not enough, and there's more that we need to do, I mean, I'm open to any feedback on that, but that has been a change for this year. So in the world's best workforce, we must address these goals, and they're, I've been in communication with MDE, because this is my first time doing this plan, and I don't want to mess it up. We need to have three things that are done. The strategic plan needs to be posted on the website, and that's our graduate profile, and that's done. There's, the second thing is an update to the board, and that's tonight, and then, I haven't even looked at it yet, but I have to do a submission on MDE website about the update on our goals. So these are the five goals, and to be honest, I'm not super excited about sharing the results because you'll see that we are a long way from reaching these goals. But I'm going to ask you to stick with me, because I think I'm going to share some things at the end, that there certainly is much hope on the horizon. You've been in our buildings, you know that these results do not reflect the hard work that our people are doing. And while, you know, it isn't reflected in these goals, after our high school listening posts that have just been such a joy for me to attend, every time I go home and I tell my husband, who doesn't work with kids, I say, you know, if you just kind of listen to the word on the street, you're like, oh, man, I don't know, the kids of today, oh my gosh, go to our high schools and listen to our kids. When the kids at John Marshall talk about, you know, rallying with their peers at Mayo and, and Sentry, when we had some things happen at Mayo, and all the kids wore, the kids at the other high schools wore Mayo colors, and when there was something at JM, the kids at the high schools, you know, that's awesome. So it might not be reflected in these goals, but our staff, we are doing a lot of things right, so hold on, there, there is hope. So the first goal is that all children are ready for school, and, you know, you might say, well, how much control do we really have over this? Well, you know, we do have some preschool and early childhood special education preschool, but we don't have a lot. You know, not nearly, it's not like it's mandatory preschool, and, you know, we have tried to improve communication with daycares and providers, but there's certainly work to be done. But this tool, the, the goal last year was to have 33% of our kids kindergarten-ready. Well, the actual result was down, it was 25%. So, you know, we're, we're going to up that a little bit, but I think when we look at this tool, we have some improvements. And not that we want to change the test to improve our results, but you'll see that there are eight categories, and the students have to show proficiency in all eight of them in order to be considered kindergarten-ready. And there's nothing on there about social and emotional, so, yeah, you might be able to get all of those eight things, you might know those coming into kindergarten, but if you're screaming and having a fit or rolling around on the floor. floor, when your teacher doesn't pick you to be first to line up, you know, we'd maybe want to know that too. You know, not that a student who does it wouldn't be ready for K, but in working with the Cradle to Career folks, I just, I disagree that only 25% of our students are ready for kindergarten. I don't think that's accurate. So our plan is, and I'll talk about this later, but we really need to look at that assessment and to get a better idea of which kids really are ready for kindergarten. So considering that, you know, we're going to really jump, but I think working on the assessment, oh, I'm sorry.
I guess, because I was thinking about it and you mentioned Cradle to Career. I mean, if we're going to impact these numbers, I mean, I think we have to be realistic. We're not going to do that as a district by ourselves.
Thank you.
It's going to take a broad community effort to reach every kid if you're going to do that. And maybe that's one thing the Cradle to Career folks in the district can say, this is going to be the one thing that we're going to do over the next five years or six years or 10, wherever, whatever they think it's going to take to get the numbers to where we think, maybe we want it to be 95%, we want it to be 100% or whatever, whatever the goal is. I don't think we can, I know we got to comply with law and we got to, you got to do reports, you got to do that stuff, but if we're going to move the needle, we're not going to do it as a district by ourselves. And we're going to have to have an all-out community effort with the community as a partner to impact that kind of, to make that kind of impact. Otherwise, we're, you're going to be sitting here five years saying the numbers 25, 30, 25, they're just going to be, I mean, we can't kid ourselves. We got to be realistic about this. That's the truth.
So while I don't disagree with what you said, Gary, my view on this always is, as a district, I mean, if in a perfect world, as a district, we shouldn't really care what the students know when they come to us because we can take whatever, wherever the student is and take them to where they need to go. So for me, the question or the, I think the more relevant metric is how many kids are done with kindergarten at the end of kindergarten? I mean, to me, that's more, that's more important because even if, you know, even if we only have 25 kids, I don't know, who are 25% of our kids who someone says, well, they're ready for kindergarten. But if 95 at the end of kindergarten are fine, I don't know, I mean, isn't that the point? I mean, isn't that what we should be looking at? It's not, I mean, for me, it's not what you know going in, it's what you know when you're done. So.
So you reject a goal.
I'll let you take that up with MDE.
Yeah, I do. I don't understand why our goal is, is coming in. I mean, we should look at what they know, what they know when they leave. That's, that's what we need to know.
Yeah, I agree, but unfortunately, this is one of the goals that we're required by the state to have. It's something by the state. Back to Mr. Smith's comment, we're fortunate that we have myself and Amy Icke and a future board member, Kathy, are on the Cradle to Career leadership table. And we've chosen two, I think they call them cans.
Cans, collaborative action networks.
Oh, and Don too, I forgot. We're dominating the team. We're going to like have the majority.
Well, then there's no excuse.
That's right. But I guess the point I was trying to make is that we're going to take on two cans. And one of the cans we're taking on is kindergarten readiness. So that's something that we're going to really work with our community to do that. So, gosh, we are going to have, we may have the majority vote in that group. No, we don't? Okay. We have a bunch of people on the tape.
Any other questions before we move on? So the next goal is all third graders reading at grade level. So our, we just looked at, you know, a couple of years of results. There are lots of ways you can look at this. Our goal was 62.3% and our results were 56.2%. So we did not make that goal in our subgroups. So that is certainly something that we are going to look at. But I think, you know, in looking forward, and I'll talk about this at the end, is, you know, we don't look at all, where are these kids coming in? How much did they grow? And if you've ever been in a lab or a testing situation with third graders doing a reading test, it really is a measure of their stamina and their ability to attend for a very long time, many times using a platform that they're not familiar with. So I just think, well, we certainly need to not lose sight of that goal because, you know, K, up until third grade, they're learning to read, after then they're reading to learn. So it really is an important benchmark. But I think how we look at that could be, give us, we could look at it differently to get better information.
So what happens with the students who aren't proficient at third grade?
We keep on trying and working with them. I mean, and here, looking at this.
So my question is, so they go to fourth grade?
Yep, 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 yep. We rarely retain students.
So, so we know that this is based on MCAs, which can be not always the best love test of educators, let's say that, and beyond the scope of your presentation. But do we look at, you know, MCAs for the purposes of world's best workforce, but then are we also having, you know, teachers, staff, you know, building staff, your department looking at, here's our MCAs, and then here are our NWEAs, or here are the things so that we're kind of getting a fuller picture of where our students are, even though we're kind of having to bow down to this MCA measure?
Right. And I just included that because that's what this year's goal was based on. But I do think in the future, I mean, I wrote that in the, in the goal, is that, you know, we're going to say third graders reading, third graders at grade level will increase, but I didn't tie it to a measure, and I'll explain why shortly. I'm just going to keep teasing till the end. So this one is, you know, the next, it's very important. Achievement gaps between students are closed, and we don't want to, you know, lower one and just raise the others. We want all of our subgroups to be more in line, and you can see from this slide that we're not. And you probably know this, but Native Americans aren't listed because it's too small of a subgroup. But the gap, so how they measure the gap is between white and then the other subgroups. So you can see with white at 63.1 and Hispanic and black much, you know, lower than that. We have a long way to go on this one.
Before you move forward, could it also be viewed, and we will use, if you will, in this instance, white students? So 38.9% of our white students aren't, I mean, I see what the information is presenting, and it is suggestive of a standard that exists, but even within the standard, if you will, of white students being the trend setter, if you will, 38.9% of them, using this bar graph, aren't meeting the standard either. And so I'm, I'd like to maybe hear and see, you know, because I think there's a bit more to be learned beyond just a comparative reference.
And again, this is MCA math, and we do have lots of other measures that we can look at. And the next one is math by status.
I'm sorry, I had a question about that, the status, and are they, is a student counted in more than one group? So if you have an EL student who is also special ed, they would, they would show up in the EL stack and the special ed stack?
Yeah. I feel like I should know that with 100% certainty, and I don't.
Could be in three.
It could be in multiple, I guess.
Thank you, guys.
You knew that, you just.
I just, I wasn't feeling 100%. I didn't want to say anything. And then reading by ethnicity. And reading by status. And, you know, looking at that just puts a, you know, knot in your stomach, right? I mean, we're not okay with that, and we, we know we have some work to do there. So, you know, instead of, you know, lowering one and raising another, we're just going to hope, try, hope isn't a good strategy, right? We're going to plan that the achievement gaps between the subgroups from, you know, where they are, very large gaps will decrease by 10%. I mean, that's, that's ambitious, but I think we can do it. So the next goal is all students graduating from high school. So the state percentage is 82.7 and the Rochester percentage is 85.8. And I, you know, this is graduating from high school in four years, and you know that, I mean, we work hard to keep our kids. If they're not ready, we give them till they're 21. So it's kind of like we're being penalized for that. And I think we're providing high-quality programming for kids who need that. And the high school principals will tell you, you know, what do I do? I've got a junior that came in, transferred from another state with two credits. Well, that's not, that student's not going to graduate in that four-year timeline, but if we can provide them, if it takes longer and they still get there, that's probably okay. So, but we, we do want to like look at all students increasing from 85.8 to 90.8. Just kind of went with the 5% increase for everything. So the final goal is all students are college, are career and college ready. And you can see, the first one is that K8, the map where we can map what kids proficiency will be, what we think they will be getting, and based on what they're doing in NWEA and the younger grades. And then this is the actual results for kids getting an ACT in math and reading.
Yeah, that's one, one of the things we like about NWEAs is that even as a third grader, how they, their score, it can project how close they are getting to 22. And with 22s picked because that's what ACT says, if you get that score, you're college and career ready. That's, that's the cutoff point they use. So NWEAs allows from third grade on up through eighth grade that we give this test that tells us where they are projecting towards that 22 on an ACT.
So are we at the point yet where we can test that theory?
I guess we haven't really taken a group. Let's see, this would be our sixth year, I think, with NWEAs. So that's something we haven't looked at, but I guess we could. So you're suggesting that we take, let's say, six years, six years back when somebody took an NWA, if they said they would get a 22, did they get a 22?
Yeah, so, I mean, because if it's not anywhere close.
Right. Then it's maybe not a good predictor.
Maybe it's not a good predictor, or maybe it's very accurate. Could be, but just.
Good question. I wrote it down.
So, so understanding that we're using the number 22 and knowing that not every district uses the magic 22 number, how does that, well, for one thing, for the good of the cause, you can get below a 22 and still go to college.
Yes.
And be successful. So let's just make sure we put that out there, right? How, how does this sort of wraparound factor into talking about the career ready versus the college ready?
That's a great question.
Yeah, to be honest with you, what, right now, this is the only, I would say, standard assessment out there that they use for college and career ready. I do know our National Superintendent Association has also made recommendations when they were doing ESSA, that you include, you know, if a student passes a career technical class or if a student takes one AP class or, and passes an AP course or a college and school course. So there's, I think there was about 10 or 12 different suggestions that our association made, but it didn't get into ESSA.
Right. And knowing that this is just world's best workforce, and we do plenty of other measurement things, but it is very college-driven, obviously.
I had a quick question as well. From a presentation point of view, I think it would be helpful if there's a granular, more granular scale here, like how many of the students were 21? Are we on the threshold of it being a lot more than this number? So I think breaking it out by the different score levels would be very helpful to know. Just looking at this, we could have had 49% at six, and we don't really know.
Yep, that's a good point. Thank you. So those graphs are based on all of the students who took that, and, you know, they can start taking it in ninth grade. But one thing we're very proud of is the ACT scores from our actual graduating class of last spring. So higher than the readiness, 55% met or exceeded the benchmark, which exceeded the state average in reading, and also we exceeded the state average in math. And we were above the average composite score too. So we're proud of our kids for that. Lake Wobegon, yes. We're all above average.
We have the SAT equivalent for this slide?
Pardon me?
Do we have the SAT equivalent of this slide?
No.
The 11th graders take.
We use ACT because it's, we require all juniors to take it, and we take it during the school day.
So on to the next things, you know, when I looked at, you know, kind of writing down things that we were doing, I thought, you know, I'm not going to write down things that we've been doing forever. Like, do you want me to put up there that we're going to do Action 100 for reading? No, that, that isn't anything new. But one thing that I, I think a lot of us are excited about, district and building leadership, is we've been doing, oh, that's our goal, 60% of them will meet or exceed that, so moving up a little bit. So we've been doing work with the Centers of Excellence, and they are the group that has worked with schools before that have been identified under, you know, how we kind of were labeling schools for a while, and we got away from that. Now with ESSA, we're kind of back doing that. But they talked to us, we had a leadership meeting in June in this room, and we, if you look at, they talked about these five categories of data. And, you know, you, in order to change a system, you can't just look at your academic data, the student academic data. And we did this huge thing where we put up all these posters of the, the five categories of data, and they just had us first write on Post-its. What's the, what data points do you collect? And we wrote them all down, and then we put them up on whichever poster they belong to. Well, which one had the most? Like overwhelmingly, the student academic data. But when we looked at program, process, policy data, fidelity data, you know, you know, I think we do collect demographic data, non-academic, and we're getting more and more perception data. But we can't change our system, I don't think, without doing this more comprehensive needs assessment, looking at the five categories of data. And when you get them, you know, you have academic data, you triangulate that, you look at, you know, how does that match up with the perception data? How are we doing on our fidelity data? Because you can say, oh, we're doing Action 100 and it's great. Well, if you're not very good at it, you know, if you're not doing it with fidelity, then it's not a great program. So we need to take a look at that. And I'm not saying that I'm going to come back a year from now and be like, oh, everything, we went up, you know, by many, many, you know. But this seems to be the hope for the future. And so we have started a comprehensive needs assessment at the district level. There are district departments that are working on this. And so. And so, I think this is our hope, hope for the future, that we really look at that. I know as a building leader, I would sometimes think, ugh, you know, I, I'm getting so mired in the, in the details and the school year's starting, I wish I would have looked at more of that. So, we're taking a step back and saying, we're going to be the role models for the buildings. And we hope to have this very comprehensive needs assessment done by the end of the school year. And if you would like, we could certainly come and present that to you. I think it's going to give us a much better picture of where we're at and then inform us and what we need to do. So, any questions on that?
I think it's a great idea and would look forward to your return.
It's a date.
Okay.
So.
Hopefully, you're still as enthusiastic about it.
Yeah, me, too.
I want to hear you hit that note again, too.
Okay, good. I can go higher. So, in our work, though, I'm not sure that everybody knows this, in our work with the Centers of Excellence, we do have a number of schools that, under ESSA, were identified as needing support. And what we're doing with this is, it's the high schools that, and all four of them, including the ALC, that were identified for comprehensive support, meaning that those sites have to do the comprehensive needs assessment that we're modeling at the district level. And then, they will have ongoing support with the Centers of Excellence. But we met with them right after June and we made a plan that we are meeting with, we have a high school, like a secondary PLC that we meet with all of the leaders and the Centers of Excellence. In the afternoon, we meet with the elementary people in the morning. And we've just had one of those meetings, but, oh my goodness, the camaraderie in that room and people collaborating and working together and talking about practices and what's working, it's very exciting, the work that's going on when we get our amazing leaders together. So, we have that to look forward to.
I, I would like to comment on that. I, all of our high schools are going to be on there every year. And if you look why they were identified for four-year graduation, it was for special education. And, you know, a student can graduate from high school with their IEP, but we have a very strong RAIL program that works with kids until they're twenty-one. And we really believe that that time and the skills that we're going to give them in that program is going to make their life better. But we're going to take a hit in our four-year graduation rate, but we're all right with that. Every year, we bring the Project Search students that do the year-long internship at male. They're not a four-year graduate, but that experience is going to be better for them. And so, every year, our high schools are going to be on this list for special ed. It's just, but we think what's best for students is what we're doing and we'll continue doing that.
And you got, you got a great partner.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. So, these are just the levels of support and I think I've already talked a little bit about that. So, just the, the ones that are listed as support, professional development by MDE, they don't have to do any special paperwork or anything, just submit their site plans to us. Targeted support, they can get support from the Centers of Excellence, but, I mean, we're all getting that. And then, just the comprehensive support is they, the additional step is they need to do that comprehensive needs assessment by March first. This is my favorite slide. I'm going to tell you about this one, okay? You know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing and anticipating different results. We need to be, and it's not the first on there, but future-focused versus results-focused. And this is something that we talked about at the new partnership we have with the, the AASA and the, that Mike talked to you about, you know, to be results-focused is saying, well, we're going to look ahead like five percent, five percent, and that's what I did. Future-focused, man, you got to look way, way down the road. So, that's something that we're doing really district-wide. I mean, we're starting at the district level. That comprehensive needs assessment, I've already talked to you about. We're doing that at the district level and we're hoping, the high schools have to do that and we're hoping that all of the schools would start that process probably in June. So, that by the time they get to the back-to-school time next year in the data retreat, if we have that, that would already be complete. Focus on instructional leadership, we're excited about this, too. Jackie and Carla and I are going to go out, we've, our calendars are full, full, full of doing great stuff, so that's okay. But we are going to go out to every building three times for three hours. This year, the first part of the meeting, our time together, we're going to meet with the principal and then any other members of there, we're calling it a learning team. So, if they want to have a coach come with or have a teacher come with, we're going to talk about, what are your current things that you're working on? And then, we're going to go out and do kind of instructional rounds and do some observations for an hour to go into classrooms, all of us together. And then, then we'll do a debrief about, what did we see? What are all the awesome things that we saw? And maybe write up a couple of questions. And then, at the end of that time together, will be individual coaching for Jackie and Carla and I, the Executive Director of Elementary and Secondary and Student Services, to do individual coaching with the principal and then talk about any operations things. And so, we're just excited to see what's going on in the buildings because, you know, not that it's easy for us to be here and make decisions about what we do in our buildings, it isn't. But when we're out there and we're seeing what's happening and able to, you know, and it isn't about monitoring, it's about coaching and, and we need to see it and so we know what we can do in order to help people move forward. We have our first visit tomorrow, we're excited for that. And we've already had one principal email us, oh, this is what we're going to be working on, can't wait to see you. So, I think that's really going to be powerful, too. Already talked about future-focused and talked a little bit, too, about that kindergarten readiness. And we don't want to, you know, change the test just to improve our results. But also around that is improved parent communication. We don't, we don't talk to our parents, we say, oh, get them ready for school and, you know, maybe read to them a little bit, but our parents don't know, these are the things we're going to be looking for. Because how, I mean, I guess as a building leader, I had parents ask me a lot, well, what should I do to have my child be ready for kindergarten? And I'd say, well, you know, read and, you know, if they show initiative, do some things. But I think that would be, that would help us if parents knew, because they want to partner with us. So, we need to improve that communication. Grading for learning, my goodness. We have been, there have been people in the district doing a study for three years about our grading practices and hold on to your hats, because it's going to get a little, you know, rough in the water. But we had a group of twelve teachers come and talk to us about how they're grading for learning and, you know, really bringing their assessment into, you know, are you really giving kids feedback on what they're learning? And then, kids being able to use that feedback in order to improve. Yeah, I didn't just get a B or a D or an F, what does that mean? So, we are really going down that road, too. Our culturally-relevant teaching practices, you know, you've heard from people who are doing the Dr. Holly work and the kids say to Mr. Johnson, oh, you're doing something different with the teachers, I wish you'd do it with the subs, too. I think that's going to have an impact on our students. Social, emotional learning, we can't do enough of this right now. And so, we're, we're working at the district level to really beef that up and to help our kids with that. And then, of course, the cradle-to-career collaboration, because, as you said, we cannot do this work alone. So, with that, so, we're going to continue to partner with our parent engagement committee to gather feedback. So, I have my paper now, I'm ready. Any questions? Mr. Schusner.
One of the things that I believe Deborah likes to ask all the time is, how do we know we're getting where we're putting our money? So, there's, we, the district does a lot of good programs to improve a lot of things. You have your goals, we've started a bunch of new programs. It'd be useful to see a timeline, I guess I'm on a timeline thing tonight, where we've implemented a program and we've seen improvements or not. We know we're doing a lot of new things, we're doing what we feel are great things, but are we getting the results we're hoping for?
And that's where we look at that fidelity data or the program, process, policy data. We talk about that a lot at the cabinet level, like, you know, we're doing this, we're, you know, doing this support or that. How do we know that that's working? We are going to be taking a closer look at that in the comprehensive needs assessment. It's an important question and a question we need to be able to answer. We agree. Ms. Workman.
Just to piggyback on what Mark said, I, I think that's really important because one of our big charges at the school board level is, we have to determine the budget. And you said earlier, you made a comment about insanity, I don't think it was personally directed at me.
No.
But it, it could have been, is, you know, we've invested a lot of money in different programs. And if it's not working or not working the way you want it to work, then let's not put any more money into it. And I don't think that there's any, there should be any feeling of being uncomfortable to say, you know what, we thought this was going to work, but it's not doing what we want it to do. Because that's really what we need to do in order to, that's the kind of information we need to have at the board level so we can support what you're trying to do. So, rather than sticking with this program because, well, maybe somebody will feel bad if we quit doing it. If it's not working, just, let's do something different.
Agree.
I, I just do want to caution us, however, and we've talked about this before, we are going to take a better look at how things are implemented and so on, but I wouldn't stand in front of a researcher and say, my data supports that Action One Hundred had these outcomes. Because we were just at Pinewood, I think, last week for their site plan presentation. Is it Action One Hundred? Is it, they do a lot of the reading center training strategies? I mean, which strategy? I mean, we can't separate that, but I do like the fact that we're really going to look at how it's actually been implemented in the classroom. But I just want to caution us that when we come forward, I don't want a researcher to come out and say, wow, wait a minute, you didn't isolate your, you know, your groups to see if it was just Action One Hundred or if it was just the one-to-one iPads. I mean, it's, there's a lot of factors that play in, but I think what we have planned is going to get her closer, closest to that, but we aren't going to be able to take that to the bank because there, there could be some other factors that could play in.
Well, and, and like, I mean, we don't have the, the luxury or maybe it would be a really bad thing to say, okay, this group of students is going to get this and we're going to see whether your life turns out great or not. And if it doesn't, well, too bad, you were part of this group that we were experimenting with. So, I really do understand that and the fact that there are so many pieces for why, why a child is successful or not, that we can't usually pull out one thing. But on the other hand, we could say, you know, there is this big thing in this, in this kid's life that if we could address it, would really go to helping them be more successful at some point. And I think that's where, where you're talking a little bit more about the fidelity data, the perception data, the program, process, policy data. When you're looking at, why aren't kids ready for kindergarten? Gary, you mentioned so many things are outside of our control as to why one student might be ready and another isn't. So, I do understand the complexity.
Thank you.
And if I may briefly, and I tend to be more, as I'm sure we each are, more concerned about, well, what happens once they become a, a part of Rochester Public Schools, not so much those things, what's are happening outside of, though they are influencing factors, no doubt. And so, I will again reiterate, I look forward to the comprehensive needs assessment with an openness that probably you will be able to, or your team will be able to share insight. And because as Director Becker has oftentimes, I've got to mention you, Ann, has oftentimes asked, well, what are we getting for what we're spending? And, and I think in this day and age, we have a group of board members and new ones coming on who, that's the bottom line. I mean, we, we need to somehow show our budget and our, the product always, the end result of our products are students. And I'm sure we share in that common goal and I look forward to, to the hearing, seeing these great things that are going on. And maybe even allowing those students on occasion to, to stand before the board and the community to share, you know, and, and those great things which are happening. Teachers as well who are doing these great things, you know, giving them an opportunity to, to let the board know and we can join in celebrating their successes.
Yep, Ms. Selinger.
So, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. You, you passed your test. We know, we understand it's tough, new position, new stuff coming down, so, much appreciation. I really liked when you talked about the instructional rounds, just the intentionality of it and the coaching pieces. And it's obvious to me that your enthusiasm, like, I think some, you know, administration gets kind of painted with a broad brush that all you folks do is sit in your office and, you know, you're all giggling over there because you know, right? But, I mean, you really, it seems like you are, and all of you are, are getting out and seeing what's going on and what needs to be done and how you can help. And I really appreciate that. And, and I think as Director Workman said, you know, we want to know how we can support you and others as well. It's kind of part of our cycle of how we're going to get things done. I do have a question about the Regional Center of Excellence and if you could just talk about what that is, who that is, how that works.
Well, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. Jackie has worked with them a lot more than I have. I mean, they're funded through MDE and it's, they're charged right now to support schools who've been identified, schools and districts who've been identified under ESSA. And it was an agreement, I think, before I came on board, that they said, you know what, we have never worked with the whole district, maybe we'll try that with Rochester. And, you know, we said, well, that'd be great. And so, we've just been meeting with them monthly to plan for these leveled PLCs that we're doing. One of the people is Jane Drennan, retired principal. And then, the other people are all educators, they were teachers for a while. I know one was an EL teacher, I don't know their other backgrounds. But they're all educators and it's kind of their job to go around the state and support districts and schools who've been identified under ESSA. And we're the first district that they're doing this little experiment with us. And we're saying, oh, we get free support, like, all the time, we'll take it. Because it's not costing us anything.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that started prior to ESSA, I think. Before that, we had Riverside and Gage were working with them directly. And as Brenda said, we reached out to them and say, would you be willing to work with our entire district? And they were excited about that. So, all of our schools are going through this training, not just those that are required by the state.
Thank you so much. And with apologies to those who have still to speak, we've had a request for a five-minute recess, so we are in recess at eight oh-six PM.
Yep.
We are reconvened at eight fourteen PM. Five point oh-five approval of student fees for curriculum-related field trips. This is an action item. Be it resolved that School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the collection of student fees for the following field trips in 2018, 2019.
Approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Seven point oh-one, approval of audit report for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item. item.
All right. Good evening, School Board Superintendent Munoz. Thank you for having us tonight. I've got Craig Popenhagen from Clifton Larson Allen. He's the new principal assigned to our account at the audit firm. So he's going to walk you through his presentation.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. I'm very happy to be here to talk about the audit results. From a, from an overall audit perspective, I don't have a lot to tell you as far as the audit results, because they're very good. We issued a clean opinion on the financial statements. So it's an unmodified, it's the technical term for it, unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can give you on your financial statements and related disclosures. Along with looking at the financial statements, we also performed audit of compliance on the special education program. So that would be on the federal portion of special education. And then we also audited compliance on some specific statutory requirements, compliance with state law. That's been, that basically is outlined and given to all auditors in the state, by the state auditor's office. So out of all of that testing, I have one finding to talk to you about, actually two minor, one finding and a less important finding. But I'll tell you what, basically what those are. We found on the special education audit, in the federal compliance piece, we had one finding on an element, one element of compliance based on a sample that we took. And basically what it related to is personnel activity compensation coding. So had a specific teacher who was, basically, her overall compensation was, base compensation was allocated correctly to federal versus non-federal programs. So she worked in both areas on a 50-50 split. However, she had some longevity pay that was not done on that same 50-50 split. So we're talking about $210. It was in a sample. I have, you know, I have to bring it to your attention. So
$210 million?
About two and a half percent of your budget, right? That's the sliver that we're looking at there. So very good results. There's a lot of compliance that goes with this. And I think, kind of dovetailing off of a previous presentation this evening, I think that those results are, really are a result of everyone working for a common, you know, common good and common goal. Certainly, John and Andrew and the accounting department, they do a fabulous job, but there's a lot of moving parts here. So I think to have these kind of results, a very clean audit is a real testament to everyone in the district. I had one minor finding on student activity funds for a band camp in Mois, where, you know, an expense where we couldn't find the supporting invoice. That was it. The activity in question happened in June, so it kind of tells you, you know, maybe what everyone's, what their attention was, was maybe on what we're gonna do for the summer. So, so very good results to talk to you about this evening. I do have some charts and graphs that we'll run through. So I can't, you know, talk about an audit without talking about some numbers, right? So we'll start off kind of with an overview of the general fund. This is the main operating fund of the district. In total, revenues came in at 226, about 226.5 million dollars. Expenditures of about 219.4 million dollars, added $7 million to the bottom line. Couple things working into those, those top-line revenues. Enrollment is up. It's all for, you'll see a graph here in a few slides, but five-year running increase in enrollment. So about 305 additional pupil units for the 17-18 year brings in, you know, more state aid funding. State aid makes up a very significant portion of revenues, as well as a, an adjustment to the formula rate. So MDE is trying to get more money out to the classroom. So the general education formula rate also increased $120 per student. So that brings in more revenue. Otherwise, of that amount, then, you know, ending fund balance in total is about $27.6 million. Twenty-two million of that is what we call unrestricted. So you have control over it. You have discretionary control of how you spend it, when you spend it. So that's a, that's a good place to be, honestly. So if we look at the next slide, kind of shows the trend on the unassigned, so this unrestricted fund balance that we're talking about. Your policy, kind of a board policy, is to maintain a minimum of an unassigned fund balance of 6% of annual expenditures. You're at about 8.7. So kind of making efforts to build that number. The assigned fund balance, this is where you have kind of specific things in mind over areas where you would like to put some of that money to use. And a portion of it is carryovers. So to the extent you didn't spend all of your budget in some of those areas in previous years, it carries forward, and you've carried it forward here for future use. So that element of their fund balance is about $3 million at the end of the 17-18 year. If we continue on, food service. So we're kind of shifting gears here, but we're looking at the food service fund now in this particular slide. Food service is basically an operation in and to itself. So basically, the food service revenue and any fund balance there has to be used in food service. You're kind of limited as to how it gets spent. So to the extent you can buy capital and equipment, and it has to be specific equipment to basically the kitchen and serving areas, that's about, other than flat-out commodity costs, about where you can use it. So in fact, you did dip into that a little bit in 2018, purchasing kitchen equipment, new equipment and things, you know, for the serving lines. So closed out the year in food service at $3.2 million of fund balance. Community service?
Question?
Yep.
So food service restriction. So say we build a new elementary school, could these funds be used to outfit that kitchen with kitchen equipment?
You can, to the extent that, you know, you may monitor kind of your, your costs of the new building. You know, if it looks like, you know, maybe the construction costs or your bond funding's getting close to being used up, you know, certainly you can utilize some of that food service fund balance.
Technically possible, but not optimal.
It'd be different than maybe what your plan is, right, for your bond project. So. Community service, very good program here. Basically, you've put some of that fund balance to use Mighty Oaks and Hawthorne over the years. Kind of your operating goal here is to break even and, you know, on a scale of operation that you have, it's pretty close to that. So you added a little bit to fund balance in 2018, ended the year at $298,000. Capital projects, with this kind of size of operation, there's always something going on here. So these are basically bond-funded projects, and they're, they're gonna be different for each year. But 2018 year, related to your $4.1 million facility maintenance bond and your $7.9 million certificate of participation related to Hoover Elementary. So the addition, as well as the indoor air quality project. That's what's happening with that $7.8 million there. The debt service fund, this is the, basically the fund to pay for the construction over time that we just talked about on the previous slide. So with debt service, you have a state mandate to levy at 105% of what you think, or what is the scheduled debt payments coming up. So that inherently builds some fund balance there. So kind of the change from 17 to 18 is basically you had a refunding of bonds, so issued back in 2015 with a scheduled call date for your 2005, 2008-8 bonds in the 17-18 school year. So you carried those two bonds, as well as the investment balance, for that payoff, and that happened on schedule in 2018. So now in 2018 going forward, you know, this is kind of then the, the level of fund balance that is, really is that 105% of what is gonna be routine payments on your bonds going forward. So where does the funding come from? We've been talking about what carries forward, but where does it come from? And in the general fund, about 75% of your total operating revenue comes from state sources. So basically, the Department of Education. About 19% is property tax-related. So whereas the state funding kind of gives you, the intent is kind of to meet, you know, minimum standard, right? I'll just call it that. I know there's educators in there, they're probably gonna cringe at that. But it's intended to fund kind of the minimum standards, and your property taxpayers are kind of giving you the extra, the something extra for additional programming. So then federal sources, this relates to the kind of the, the finding that I was talking about, but that finding you can see relates to about 3% of your overall operation. And then, how did we kind of get here? Of course, increasing enrollment. So these are, ADMs are adjusted daily membership. So the student counts here aren't raw student counts, they're basically weighted according to how the Department of Education funds you through their state, state aids. So nice trend here is five years of an upward tick. And for all intensive purposes, it sounds like it's gonna keep going. So very good results. So that's, that's what I have for prepared remarks and...
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. This is a briefing item. We could certainly move it to action.
I'm moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To move this to action and discussion, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's an action item. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accepts the 2017-2018 audit report that the school district financial records is submitted by Clifton Larson Allen LLP.
Approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
7.02, acceptance of proposals for the sale and issuance of general obligation facilities maintenance bonds, Series 2018A.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief us, and he's gonna be joined by Greg and Jody from Ellers.
All right. Thank you again. We had a bond sale this morning, and as stated, Greg Crowe and Jody Zespa are going to tell us about it and give you the results. And then ideally, you'll move this to action, otherwise that voids out the bond sale if we don't act on it yet tonight. So we do need to act on this.
Thanks a lot for having us again tonight. Let's start by walking through, you have a report in your packets on the 2018A general obligation facilities maintenance bonds. I'll get to the punchline for both issues. We received several bids, and all the bids were better than we projected last month when we brought the pre-sale report. So interest rates about a half percent lower in both cases than what we had projected. So good results, good attention to the, to the issues that you're offering. So we're happy with, with what we saw. We'll walk quickly through the reports just to give you a summary of, of the bids and the action you'll be taking and the resolution awarding the sale to the low bidder. So as you can see in the first page, we note at the top the purpose for the $24 million bond issue, and we also note the rating. And Jody's gonna talk a little bit about the rating report, but Standard and Poor's assigned the AAA credit enhanced rating because of the state program, and then affirmed the AA rating that the district had carried from previous bond issues forward for these, for these issues as well. We received nine bids for the facilities maintenance bonds, which is a great result. We'd like to see at least three. We love it when there's five or six. So to get nine bids is a, is a testament to the credit quality that you bring to the table, partially to the bond size. It's a nice, nice sized bond. And there actually was a little bit of limited supply of bonds over the last week or two. And so we've seen some, a lot of attention paid to the bond issues that we brought in the last week or two for, for school districts. The low bidder was Morgan Stanley out of New York, and the low bid was about 3.22, 2.3%. I'll note in the italicized note under the summary results table, the important part of that note is that we did receive a significantly larger premium than we had projected during the pre-sale analysis, when we talked about what we expected in terms of bid rates. We used some of that premium to pay the capitalized interest payment, since the first payment is not on this year's levy. The payment is coming out of bond proceeds and funds on hand. So we were able to reduce the bond size because of that premium. So when we, when we offered the bonds for sale this morning, and as we talked about during the pre-sale process, we offered 24.96 million of bonds on your behalf, and we were able to downsize that to 24.1 million, still provide sufficient funds for project costs, and also reduce the contribution from Fund VII from $500,000 to about $141,000 of funds on hand to go toward that.
And Fund VII, for those who aren't familiar, is debt service. So we're gonna use a little bit of our debt service excess, that $2 million, and apply towards the interest there.
Right. So we're able to, to reduce that, that contribution. So under the note that that half percent lower, four tenths of a percent lower interest rate results in total payments of about $1.4 million less than we had projected in the pre-sale report. We do wanna point your attention to the attachments. The first four pages of the attachments are the actual, or five pages are the actual bids. Just note a couple of big-picture things. One, you'll see there's a lot of action from around the country. So a lot of attention from a lot of the big banks that you've probably heard of. We wanna point out, if you look at the first four bids, the low bid was 3.23%. The fourth highest bid was 3.26%. So about three one-hundredths of a percent difference in those bids. So we know we were getting good bids and, and, and kind of know that's where the market was at. So again, confirmation of the, of the good results. On page six, we broke out the sources and uses slightly different than in the pre-sale, because a portion of the funds are, will be used for health and safety projects. And the Department of Education likes to see those funds segregated a little bit. So when we, when we do the final levy in the closing report, we'll have a separate schedule for the levy. But that's basically what, what we presented in the pre-sale. As I mentioned, the premium is higher by about $550,000, and the underwriters' discount is lower by about $150,000. So a net increase of about $700,000 in, in that premium is what is the major takeaway from the sources and uses table. Page seven is just a schedule of debt service. Page eight is the big-picture schedule of your facilities and capital funding going forward, and will help set up the planning for the financing as you go to the voters with the new plan. It's kind of expressed better on page nine graphically. You can see that we basically laid this out with level debt service going forward to, in a dropdown in page 2020, to allow us to build some of that financing and alleviate some of the tax impact and create tax predictability for your, for your taxpayers. Page 10 is our summary of how your facilities maintenance plan will be financed over the next all 30 years. I'm sure we'll all be here in 2049 for that discussion. But, so that's the financial picture. Jody does wanna just take a minute and talk about the rating report, which we've only attached to this issue just to save some paper, and starts on page 12.
Thank you. So yes, the rating report does cover the issue that we're talking about now, as well as the issue that we'll be talking about in just a couple of minutes. We had a rating call with Standard and Poor's on November 15th, and John did most of the heavy lifting for that, and did a really, really great job. So you should know that he represented your district very well, and also included Andrew Hoffbeck and Eric Brown from the Finance Department. So I think that was good for them to have some exposure and to be able to participate a little bit in that process, too. So you'll see on attachments, the, the number numbers are at the bottom of the page, but attachments, page 12, you're going to see that triple A long-term rating based upon the state credit enhancement rating for the district as well as the underlying rating of double A stable. There's only three, or I'm sorry, two districts in the state that have an S and P rating at triple A. There's one more rating notch above where you are at. That's a double A plus and there's just a handful of districts in that category. So your, your rating, your underlying rating is very high. You'll see that they provide some rationale on page 12 about the rating and go into a little bit more information about the bond issues at the bottom of page 12 and top of page 13. I'd like to direct your attention to the middle of page 13, which shows basically their kind of overview of what that double A rating means to them. So it reflects their assessment of the location in the heart of the Rochester Municipal Service Area with an economic base supporting strong income indicators and very strong market value for capita. The trend of growing enrollment certainly factored into that double A rating. Strong reserves with good financial management practices and policies. The low overall net burden, which we believe is likely to continue even accounting for the potential issuance. So we talked to them about the fact that you're likely to move forward with a large bond referendum and hopefully get support from the public and that didn't bother them in fact, in terms of the rating at all. So we're really happy to see that comment. Offsetting the strengths, they are concerned about the fund balance and mentioned that they, that the level that it's at is a little low compared to other double A districts. So that's a little offsetting negative in terms of their rating report that they issued. And then it just goes through the, all of the categories that we talked about in the phone call. So finances, management, debt, and then their outlook then starts at the bottom of page 16 and then they provide a downside scenario and an upside scenario. So just giving you an indication as to what might cause them to lower your underlying rating and what could cause them to, to raise your rating. And that is it for the rating report.
Any questions about the sales report?
Did they give you a suggested percentage they would like to see our fund balance get up to?
They indicated that the, the national mean for double A rated districts is seventeen percent. That's higher than Minnesota. So the Minnesota mean is more like 12 percent. And they said that that's a little more typical of the, of the double A rated districts. So when they're rating you, they're comparing you not just to how you're doing yourself, but how do you compare to other peer group school districts?
So our fundamentals are stronger. To get the same rating in our basic fundamentals are stronger than that one indicated, the debt, debt reserve.
Yeah, some of your other categories like your local economy.
Are higher than the other districts we're compared to.
Correct.
Any other questions?
Didn't affect the fundamentals, I guess what I'm saying about the balance. It really didn't affect the fundamentals.
This is a briefing item that Mr. Carlson would really like to have moved to action.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This is now an action item. Be it resolved, the School District of, got the right one, yeah. School, School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the issuance awarding the sale describing the form and details providing for the payment of $24,130,000 general obligation facilities maintenance bonds series 2018A and authorizes the execution of documentation relating thereto as provided in attachment B.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. Seven point oh three, acceptance of proposals for the sale and issuance of full-term certificates of participation, series 2018B.
So just a, we'll backtrack just a second on 2018A because I failed again to mention what we're going to do with that money. But the primary purpose of that is a remodel at Bamber Valley this summer. Then there are a variety of other projects like windows at different schools and so on and so forth that need to be addressed. So those, that's what the use of that funds are for. On this set of certificates of participation, we're using these as our every third year to replace student technology. So this is very familiar. We've brought this to you. I think this is the seventh time we've used this funding mechanism. So they're going to give us the results of this sale this morning that we held at the same time.
Great. Yes. So the format of this report is very similar to what we used for the 2018A report. So you'll see for, for this issue, the ratings assigned were exactly the same. The number of bids were five, which on certificates of participation is great. So we generally don't see as many bidders on certificates of participation. So again, kind of a rule of hoping to receive three and receive five is great. The low bid on this was a 2.25 from Janie Montgomery Scott out of Philadelphia. And you'll see the summary of the results for the certificates included there. The same comment related to the premium, a little bit higher than we anticipated in our pre-sale report. And then in the notes, the true interest cost of 2.25 is lower than 2.79 that we had in the pre-sale report. So we did very well on this sale also. The attachments included with this report then, the bid tab is on attachments, page one, and you can see the low bidder there than JP Morgan out of New York, Bear Down Milwaukee, Morgan Stanley out of New York, and then Hutshaki out of Chicago, Illinois. And the difference between the high and low bid there, 2.25 to 2.43. But again, the two lowest and three lowest bidders were really, all of them. I guess like all four were pretty tight. And then the fourth bidder was just a little bit higher. Fifth bidder was a little bit higher. The next pages are just updates to the schedules that we provided with our pre-sale reports. So again, our sources and uses, the most important number on that page is the deposit to the construction fund. That's the amount that the Commissioner of Education approved based upon the list of items that John submitted to them. So we wanted to make sure we met that target amount. And then on page three, the debt service schedule, we did include a estimate of your levy and your proposed levy that was approved in September. You'll see that final levy, of course, included in your amount that you'll act on next, two weeks, two weeks. So the levy that we included was 1,658,650. So very close to what that final amount is then for fiscal year 2020. So that is everything for the certificates of participation.
Ms. Becker.
I just have a question. So you said the, these are for student technology?
Correct.
So why did we have to put a big chunk of the deposit in the construction fund?
Construction funds probably not the right term. It'd be more like project account to buy the computers and so on and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not physical building construction, but yeah, project fund.
Any other questions? And this too is a briefing item.
Moved to action.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This is now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the lease, did I have this right? The lease purchase of district equipment providing for the financing thereof and issuance of certificates of participation with respect thereto and approving and authorizing the execution of documentation relating thereto as provided in attachments B, C, and D.
No approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you so much for your presentation and thank you for hanging in there so long.
They're actually going to hang in a few more minutes because when we go to a closed session, they want to grab signatures. So they go back to the cities to have some signatures from you guys. They'll be here for a few more.
Thank you. Seven point oh four, approval of reallocation of remaining proceeds from general obligation alternative facilities bonds, series 1215A. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this item.
All right. This one takes us back to 2015. In April of that year, we financed $4,180,000 to do indoor air quality improvements at Pinewood Elementary School. It's taken some time, but we've gotten all the projects done, all the bills paid and interest earned on some of the money sitting there. But we have 70,247 left over. We have two options we can do with that money. We can put it back into the debt service, which you heard from Craig earlier, has 2.1 million. That would kind of just lower our future property tax levy. Or through passing an updated resolution, we can transfer those funds to a different project. When we wrote the resolution back then, we did it very specific to just Pinewood Elementary, whereas these newer long-term facility maintenance bonds, we've written more generally. So we can use it towards anything on the 10-year plan. This one, we would actually need you to pass a resolution to say, move it over to a different building. And so what we've done is we've looked at the schedule of projects that need to be done and we've identified Gage as a very good candidate to receive the $70,000 to do lighting upgrades. They're on the plan. We'll just move them forward and get them done with this money that's already here in our hands.
Move to action.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the use of an amount not to exceed 70,247 in remaining proceeds from the $4,180,000 general obligation alternative facilities bonds, series 2015A, and authorizes the execution of documentation relating thereto as provided in attachment A.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Seven point oh five, approval of reallocation of remaining proceeds from general obligation alternative facilities bonds, series 2016A. This is a briefing item.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will also brief us on this item.
Hi, good evening. This one takes us back to February 16, 2016, when we authorized borrowing $11,295,000 to do projects at Churchill and Elton Hills. Once again, these projects are all closed out, done, bills are paid, and there's $515,600 left over. And we've identified on the 10-year plan, an appropriate use for those funds would be parking lot projects at Facility Services Center. That was a property we acquired from People's Cooperative a few years back. And if you've been out there, you might be missing a tire or a wheel from your car because that parking lot is really bad. And so this would get that project dealt with now, using these leftover funds if you approve.
No approval.
Or move to action, whatever it is we're doing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's now an action item. Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize the use of an amount not to exceed 515,600 in remaining proceeds from the $11,295,000 general, $11,295,000 general obligation alternative facilities bonds, series 2016A, and authorizes the execution of documentation relating thereto as provided in attachment A.
No approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just comment that if you're wondering, why do we have $515,000 left over? That was good news because architects had given us estimates of what those projects were going to cost. And when bids were open, things came in under budget. So that was good news that things cost less back then than what we thought they would.
Excellent.
Credit for one year, the other one.
I was going to say, in my experience.
Mix up for the one.
In my seven years here, this is the first time we brought to you with excess funds. Usually we're scrambling trying to figure out how to pay the final bills.
Well, might I just say it's about time?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Seven point oh six. John, just keep talking. Okay. Seven point oh six, approval of 2018-2019 budget adjustments as of October 31st, 2018. This is a briefing item.
Yes, this is Mr. Carlson's final briefing item for us tonight.
All right. Well, now that we've got the books closed on 2017-18, it's time to bring forward the first quarter budget revisions for 2018-19. We incorporate the results of what has happened. We make adjustments and then we ask you to approve that so we get our budget matching more realistic of where we're at right now. So want to run through this fairly quickly, but how I've laid this out on all the different funds, just going to give you orientation here. The original column from May 22nd is what we thought the budget would be back then and what we had you approve. So we thought the beginning fund balance would be 16 million. As you heard earlier from Craig, it was actually 26.8 in the general fund. And we thought revenues would be 225 million, minus out our expenditures of 224.8 million. We'd end this coming school year at 16.2 million. We've had some federal funding changes where we budgeted conservatively. We traditionally do that, but there's 1.6 million more in federal funding. And then there were some adjustments down in some other categories as we fine-tuned our numbers. But overall, there's 1.4 million of additional revenue that can be worked into the budget to give us a new revenue budget of 226.4. And then on the expenditure side, there's 6.4 million of expenditures. Now, 3.8 million of that is carryover balances. So sites and, and other projects that were in process, we let them carry forward the unspent funds and then we work it back into their next year budget if you approve. So that's more than half of that 6.4 million. And then the federal funding, we've got the new revenue. So we add in the 1.6 million of new expenditures to offset their federal revenue. And then the teachers' contract settlement, I haven't talked a lot about this yet, but as we were dealing with settling that out, we knew that we intentionally stayed exactly within your parameters that you gave us for a two-year contract with our teachers. It called for us to underspend in the first year by 1.3 million from what we had on the books. And because it was so far down into the year there, we didn't get a chance to revise down that budget and get it correct in the new year budget. So really this is shifting money that we didn't spend last year. That was part of the reason why we did better than we thought. And we're just putting it now into this budget so we can spend it on our teachers this school year. So that would bring our expenditure budget up to 231.2 million and we'd end the year at 22 million in the fund balance. I've got a few more to go.
Oh, wishful thinking. Sorry.
Non-allocated is a kind of a subcomponent of the general fund. In our books, we track it separately, but it would count in those general fund numbers that Craig was talking about earlier. We always just to start with a zero budget, but this is grants, fundraisers, donations, things that come in that we're really not allocating until the revenue is received. Plus we roll out then any carryovers. So there's been $500,000 of new money received in grants and donations this year. And then with last year's 800,000 of carryover, the expenditure budget would be 1.3 million. FTE, just to give you an update of where we were. When you approved the budget last May, we had 2,572.5 FTE in that budget with 10 of those spots were teacher budget, budgeted for teachers, but we didn't know where they would go. We called it the contingency budget. As of right now, we're at 2,585.9. There's more detail in board docs about how we got that increase, but we did have to use 10.45 of contingency. So we've gone just a little bit over. So with section sizes at certain schools needing to be bigger or we've needed to roll out extra support in certain schools for different reasons, we have gone slightly over the 10 that we budgeted for contingency. The rest of the difference is new revenue that offset those positions. So that's not a huge concern to us because there's new money to cover that. So just kind of a high-level summary, we finished last year. You heard Craig say that we did better than we had planned. And so that will allow us to finish 18-19 better than planned. We had planned for 6.3 percent in the unassigned fund balance. It's projecting that it'll be at 7.7. So he told you that we ended last year at 8.7. We're going to use about a percent of that. And that's really due to that shifting of the money of the teacher contract from one year into the next. The revised budget again assumes we're going to use most of the prior year's carryover balance. That's why it kind of looks like now the expenditures are higher than our revenue. We are asking that we put five FTE of contingency above and beyond the 10 that we already had so that we have 15 to work with. In a district this size with students constantly moving in, there's just unanticipated things where we need to roll out an extra teacher or, or a couple of paras here and there. So we're just asking for a little flexibility since we had a pretty good year end there. And then this is something that I talked about with S and P is that our economy here is really so good that we're having trouble hiring people. And as of last week or a couple of weeks ago, we had 72 positions that were unfilled. So they're in the budget, but there's nobody in there. So they're using day-to-day subs. They're getting paid a lower rate than a salaried person would, or they're just going unfilled with nobody in those jobs right now. So that's, that's a really big number to be missing that many people. We also talked about this. I haven't really showed this to you before, but we kind of tried to put together what's really, when you look at our general fund budget, usually we're projecting that we're going to deficit spend. So back to 2010-11, we were projecting we'd use $6 million of the fund balance, 5.4 million, 3.0. So every year we're looking like we're going to spend into the fund balance because of those carryover dollars. Then the next line kind of shows you how we actually end with the fund balance. So if it's a blue number, we added to the fund balance. So if it's a blue number, we added to the fund balance four out of eight years, and then four out of eight years, we actually spent from the fund balance, but we spent less than what we had planned for. So every year, eight years running, we've had a positive budget variance of about $7 million on average. And again, some of that's restricted money, it's staff development dollars, operating capital, we can't really do whatever we want with it, but we have to set it aside for future years. And on average, we're only off 4 percent. I know 7 million sounds like, goodness, can't you get it closer than that? But we're talking about a 4 percent variance on hundreds of millions of dollars, and so we feel like that's a pretty reasonable amount to be better than planned. So here are the top five things of why we did better in the general fund last year. Again, teachers' contract settlement, we shifted 1.3 million out of last year into this year. Student, that's supposed to say, student transportation contract was 952,000 under budget, sorry about that. Unfilled positions, we had the same thing last year. We had $943,000 of positions budgeted that didn't get used because there weren't people to fill them. We had unspent supply budgets of 902,000, and then our special ed revenue, I kind of tipped you off when we were setting the budget that we're going to be higher than planned, and it was at 767,000. So those top five things account for a good chunk of why we did better than planned last year. All right, now we can go a little bit faster. Food service fund, $200,000 of revenue adjustments, $100,000 of expenditure adjustments, not a very major change there in food service. Community ed, again, we got a little extra federal funding, so we're asking to adjust the budget about 100,000 on each side. Construction fund, we roll out that 7.9 million of the Hoover Project that was in process at June 30, needs to be put back because it was finished in July and August. Debt service fund, really, we made a very minor, it doesn't even show up there the way we rounded off, but just a little extra interest income than what we had planned for. Work comp, we're not making any changes in that fund. Dental, we did raise premiums, 8 or 9 percent here, so that's going to give another 100,000 dollars of revenue, and then we dropped the expenditures just a little bit, but it was under 100,000. And the health fund, we did not adjust premiums, so our employees are going to pay the same for healthcare next year, same as the district contribution will be flat next year, but we lowered our expectation for claims by 1.3 million. We now have, we're projecting to have 14.2 million in our healthcare fund at the end of the year, so that's almost a half a year's worth of expenditures saved up. So if trends continue, we might be able to have a very low or no increase on healthcare premiums again next year, which would be great news for our employees again. Paper tiger, very minimal changes there, just a little extra interest. OPEB, I like to point this out because just four years ago, we didn't have an OPEB trust, and we're now projecting that we'll have 11.6 million saved and set aside against our 18 million worth of future costs. So we've really done a great job of saving that up and trying to offset that liability on our books. That's budget adjustments for first quarter.
Now, do you have questions?
Nothing's going to change.
No, not until the third quarter, when I bring this to you again.
So we eventually have to adopt this, right?
Right, that would be helpful.
I'll move to action.
Second. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to move this to action. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is an action item. Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district 535 approve the 2018-2019 budget adjustments through October 31, 2018 as presented.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
7.07, closed session negotiations.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.03, subdivision 1, I move to go into closed session to discuss labor negotiations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are recessed at 9 o'clock PM. Convened at 9:13 PM. 7.08, ratification of 2018-2020 Teamsters Local Clerical Collective Bargaining Agreement. This is an action item. Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district 535 does hereby ratify the 2018-2020 collective bargaining agreement between the Rochester Public Schools and clerical employees.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, and we are adjourned at 9:14 PM.